All right, folks. Let's get started on the budget meeting. Here we are, six o'clock on May 12th. And call to order. Roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmember Bracco. Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Fugazi. Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Marks.
Here.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Here.
Mayor Bozo.
Here. And before we jump right into it, I want to see if there's any public comment for items.
Yes, I mean, because we have two public speakers that are going to just talk about the budget.
Okay. Yeah, so we can go right to that. Yeah, okay. First speaker, please.
All right. The first speaker is Luis Ramirez, followed by Emily Miller.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Forbes, thank you for letting me speak for a few minutes. I think it's fitting that I'm going to speak about the parks budget. I think one of the first pages on the budget is a picture of one of our beautiful neighborhood parks with the foothills in the background. So I think it's perfect kind of speaking about it. So I want to just thank you for including in the proposed budget amounts for some of our parks. And a lot of the stuff I was reading, I can see that parks is, well, I can see that economic development is a big deal for the city council and our city, and appropriately so. No bigger example than that, what we're thinking about at the Sharks Arena, Gilroy Sports Park, Hector Pass. I would say that the investments in our community parks is no different than doing that. When you invest in a city park where the buildings look good, where everything works, where it's well lit, where it's safe, people feel comfortable there, they want to stay there. They won't go to a dog parks in another city and spend their money there. They'd rather stay in Gilroy. And we don't have that in some of our community parks. Some of the dollars that are in the proposed budget are for improvements to our surfaces. You can't play basketball in some of our community parks because of the asphalt's all cracked, basketball courts are unusable, no lights to play basketball at night or racquetball, handball at night. There's a pretty large handball community here in Gilroy. So the dollars that we have allocated to that, I think, that we recommend as a commission from the Parks and Recreation Commission, would go to help that, and I want to thank you for that. The other thing that I want to bring up is recreation. Although it's not included in the proposed budget, I do want to say recreation, which is important to a lot of these, is a public safety issue. The more that we keep our kids engaged in our community, especially for activities that some of them can't afford. We have soccer programs that cost $300 to participate in. There's a lot of kids in our community that can't afford $300. We have swim programs that cost $125. A lot of our kids can't afford those kind of things. I know that our philosophy in cities been this page ago, but sometimes I think if we can have a little excess funds, we can make that a little bit easier, to get the kids off the streets, out of their computers, in front of their phones, and get them involved in sports activities, get them engaged, give them another alternative than just hanging out with their friends and doing nothing. So I urge you, one of the things I want you to consider, I'd like you to consider, is that if there is a surplus in an annual budget, I would like for you to consider that allocating some of those surplus funds towards recreation, whether it's 5%, 3%, 10%, some surplus, if it happens to happen, be nice to have a little fund that we could rely on and then provide scholarships for other activities that we could target certain parts of our community to make it a little bit safer. So thank you for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Emily Miller.
Good evening, Mayor Bozo, council members, and city staff. You may be starting to recognize me. My name is Emily Miller, and I serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission. I've been attending meetings, speaking at public comment, and engaging in community events because I care deeply about how we shape our public spaces and invest in the well-being of Gilroy residents. I want to express my strong support for the full package of Parks and Recreation initiatives included in the proposed FY '26-'27 budget. The variety of planned investment, like from trail enhancements and facility upgrades to new amenities like dedicated pickleball courts, reflect a thoughtful, inclusive approach to recreation that serves residents of all ages and interests. These projects not only provide more opportunities for play and relaxation, they're about building a safer, healthier community. Well-maintained, active public spaces have been shown to reduce crime, foster social connection, and offer positive outlets for youth and families. They make Gilroy more resilient, more welcoming, and more connected. Thank you for your continued commitment to Parks and Recreation and for prioritizing long-term investment that benefits the entire community. Thank you for listening and for your continued leadership in making Gilroy a city where everyone can feel safe, active, and proud to call home.
Thank you.
We have no other speakers at this time.
Okay, we will go right to staff.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I will kick this off, and then you will go through the presentation with all the department heads, who will give you their department budgets and programs. And so I'll start off basically with what was like the budget message, which I hope everybody read. It's a 400-page document, but if you read those 23, you can kind of see what the high-level summary is. We'll talk a little bit about the budget development process, the council strategic planning to date, recommended budget highlights, and financial summaries, departmental presentations, the capital improvement program, and then our next steps. This is a outline of the budget process, and we are at the top. We started beginning in January. February, council strategic plannings. March through April, budget development. And we are on the bottom now, with May being recommended budget release, council budget session, and then finalization of strategic planning. And then you adopt the budget in June, and you start the cycle again. However, after the first year, you don't redo the budget, you just mid-cycle adjust what had been adopted for the two-year process. Session one, February 12th. Session two, March 17th. And session three was on May 5th for strategic planning. And session four will be on May 19th, where we will discuss unhoused, public safety, and then your legislative agenda, goals, priorities, and we'll start working on the department work plans. I do want to remind you that the budget is in a recommended status. We have plenty of opportunities to discuss and to deliberate and to make adjustments as necessary as we get aligned a staff with what council's priorities are. I hope that what you saw so far shows that we're on the right path, but I know that you'll have ideas and thoughts that we need to work through in the last few weeks of the budget process. And then June 2nd, we will bring to you a recommendation to adopt a final budget that will set us on our course for the next 24 months, starting July 1st. Your current priorities and goals, they're really not yours, they were the previous councils, but they look similar throughout the years because they reflect the core services and our core duties as an organization and as a government. And develop a financially resilient organization that relies on local revenues and resources, maintain and improve city infrastructure, including streets, facilities, and incorporate green energy practices, promote economic development that increases the city's tax base, quality improvement, or, I'm sorry, quality employment, ensure neighborhoods equity from city services, including public safety, streets, parks, and recreation, and then promote availability of safe, affordable housing for all Gilroy residents. We will talk again about this on the 19th, in hopes of finalizing your priorities and goals for the next two-year cycle. Okay, so I'm going to start you off with the more high-level things, and then Harjo will hop in with the finances, and then we'll be on our way. We have 130 slides, but there's a lot of pictures, there's a lot of blank slides, but as you can see, we're going to go pretty fast. And so what we're asked is, after the end of each speaker, I'll ask you if you have any questions. You can ask me questions about what I just presented, and then it just goes on with next department head and such. And, you know, of course, if there's something you're really not sure on during the presentation, just, you know, let us know, and we can pause for a second. All right. So some of the themes that are included in this budget book and in the budget message is that we continue to grow, and we've been continuing to grow since, you know, 1870, basically, but a lot different kind of growth now. Lots of housing, some new opportunities for development on the east side of town with warehouses, businesses, so we continue to grow. The other takeaway in this budget is that you continue to see a significant investment in infrastructure. And in the last budget, we did a considerable amount of public safety infrastructure, and in this budget, we're transitioning more to the areas that we feel have probably been a little neglected. And as Commissioner Ramirez stated, you can tell there is a focus on recreation facilities. And we talked about that in the very beginning, that we focused in a lot of particular areas in the last few years, and we're trying to catch up with some of those others. And so we have some funding options and opportunities, and we actually have some money available to do these kinds of projects. Long-term planning and implementation, a lot of the plans that we started three, four years ago are coming to fruition, and the ones that you're thinking about doing today will be several years in the making, but will mature in the next three, four, or five years. Economic development has been a main theme of this particular council since January. It continues to be, and you'll see the allocation of resources and the recommendations reflect your informal direction, which will turn into your formal direction eventually. Fire service evaluation, there's been a lot of changes in our area for fire service, medical service in general, and so it is a good opportunity for us to evaluate how we provide those services for our community. There's many models, there's many things to consider, but we have not done that in quite some time, and so I do recommend that that's something we do as part of our work plan. Customer service enhancements, we've just gotten started on a few of those. Gilroy Connect or C Click Fix was released about a month, a month and a half ago, and there's more opportunities for engagement improvements for that system. It's very much in its infancy, and you're going to see in our work plans how we have linked that to a lot of the things that we're doing that makes what we're doing on a daily basis more transparent to our businesses and residents. Unfunded pension liability costs and workers' compensation, we started down the path of trying to address what we knew were going to be significant increases in pension costs in 2029, 2030, and we started working on that about four years ago. And so those efforts are going to enable us to offset some of those costs without hurting our operations. And then we also see some issues with our workers' compensation program that has more than tripled in cost in the last few years, and that's something we need to work on and see what we can do to make sure that our employees are taken care of and that we can financially do that. And then last, the last piece of the budget is the financial outlook. You also adopt a five-year forecast, which is a, it's a look at three, four, or five years out, and you're not adopting that budget, but you are seeing the impacts of what you're adopting now, if they're permanent, economic impacts, and sales tax growth, property tax growth, to make sure that we're headed on the right, you know, path. Yes?
Did you skip limited staffing augmentation?
I did.
Can you speak to that a little bit?
I can.
Thank you.
You do not see a significant amount of staff additions, primarily because we started the budget with a deficit. When we showed you the forecast previously, it was about a $1.5 million deficit. I told you that was something we could work on to bring you a balanced budget, and we've done that. And that's due to not adding a lot of ongoing costs. So the augmentation we have is strategic. It focuses on existing revenue sources, existing financing opportunities, but the general fund does not add really that many positions. And that's what I told you, you know, very much back in January, that we don't have the budget to add a lot of staffing unless we can identify cost reductions in other areas, or we can identify additional revenue.
Thank you.
Okay, maintaining infrastructure investment. The capital improvement program is discussed by Public Works later, but the budget includes fundings for streets, which we have done for numerous years now as part of our street improvement program, the growth of the utilities department, which is funded by the water and wastewater rates, Parks and Trails, which is funded by the Recreation Fund, accumulated fund balance, it's not general fund, and then public facilities. You'll see that we have been putting money into restrooms, maintenance of our own facilities, including this building, and, you know, that's really the limitation of the general fund investment. We do a lot of one-time strategic investments based on our available fund balance. So we have 30% reserve requirement. When we exceed that, we start thinking about what we can do with that extra money, and we put that into post-employment benefits pensions, but we've also invested in city facilities, the fleet, we've replaced numerous vehicles, which will be discussed, and public safety equipment, which, as we are growing, like I said, we need more fire engines, fire trucks, we need bigger buildings, bigger developments, we need equipment that we don't have, and we have plans in the budget to address that. Long-term master planning and implementation, you are almost done with your work on the Civic Center Master Plan, which is discussing a community center, senior center, aquatics, and city hall. And so once we're done with that planning, then you talk about how you're going to pay for it, or how you're going to implement it. An example I like to use is the sports park, which had its master plan approved, I believe, around 20 years ago. It's nine phases, we're on phase three. So you are definitely, it's long-term planning and funding, and it generally is the biggest challenge. We have a reflection of the Recreation Needs Assessment, listening to our community, listening to our Parks and Recreation Commission, to put some funds in for pickleball courts. Again, that is not general fund money, that is money that has been accumulated in the Recreation Fund due to revenues and savings, and we believe that's a good one-time use, and it's reflective of what the community is expecting from us. And as was previously stated, we have some general parks improvements. We have money that's available due to savings in what we use on streets. We have another funding mechanism for the next two years for streets, and Harjo will talk to you about that. But again, improving a lot of areas that just haven't got a lot of attention, and if economic development is the theme, one of your themes, then I would agree with the previous speaker that parks are an economic development driver as well. Really, everything is, one way or another. Okay, the budget highlights also include the establishment of the Economic Development Department and the addition of an Economic Development Director. That is the primary general fund addition that I included in your budget, and that was very clear from the council and all the discussions, that that was a direction, and that was an investment that the council wanted to make in helping us generate additional revenue and bringing good businesses and good jobs to the community. Department initiatives, enhancing gateways to the city, master strategic plan update including, you know, downtown-specific, downtown-strategic, perhaps a specific plan in the 101 Monterey exit in South Gilroy. And then lastly, initiatives of business attraction, retention, adulation, and roundtables. So this is what this department is going to do for you and for the community. Fire services evaluation, we have allocated $3 million in previous budgets for the upgrade to La Sonimus and Chestnut, and those are out in design right now and will be under construction, we think, within the next six to eight months. And then we have the new fire station construction, which is a big improvement for our service opportunity in the Santa Teresa area, and that is in design as well right now. That is a project that is funded and has land and is ready to go as soon as we have our Glen Loma Corporation grade the property and put in the retaining wall. So we are on our way. So we are preparing for that. We did not include money in this budget for staffing the fourth fire station. I think that is a longer-term challenge we're going to have to address, but we have to get ready. And so as you can see, we did add a fourth fire division chief who will oversee the project. That is not paid out of the general fund the first two years, it is paid out of the construction fund. To oversee that project, you need somebody every day managing that project and somebody with that kind of expertise. And then we propose several promotions within the existing fire division budget in order to get leadership in place for when we do open the fire station. So we're getting those steps ready, we're getting those positions ready, and this all with the long-term analysis of how we're going to pay for this is the baseline plan to staff the fourth fire station. Limited staffing augmentation, we're aligning this with excess ERAF, and I won't tell you what ERAF is, but Harjo will, and it is essentially money that we received a few years ago that is ongoing money that we were not expecting, and it has allowed us to do some strategic staffing augmentation. We used that money in previous years to add fires personnel and police personnel, and so that is considered after several legal challenges to be ongoing and pretty safe at this point. Re-class reorganize, or, so as I previously stated, Economic Development Director, Fire Division Chief, and the re-class reorg of two firefighter captains, three firefighters to engineers, one management analyst, a senior management analyst, and a youth task program coordinator to the police department, which has its own funding as well, so. Limited staff augmentation, we put in here three additional positions in the Recreation Fund, and after a few years of recovery of COVID, the Recreation Fund is operating in a way that was intended, where there was a baseline $1.5 million investment from the council into the fund, and then the operations would generate revenue where possible. I believe that they are in a position now generating enough revenue where they can pay for their own staff augmentation, so we included three positions to build that bench back closer to where it was at one time, but without any additional contribution from the general fund. Okay, and this is my last slide before I turn it over to Harjo. Again, utility funds, it is a growing division. We are looking at property to invest in for location of our utilities, and as we get more mature in the utility department, there are positions that we're finding we have to have due to state requirements, due to federal water requirements, treatment requirements, and so that budget is being adjusted every two years to get those positions in place. I think one that is especially important is water quality specialist. There's a lot of federal rules coming down on us about the water quality. We don't have a designated person to do that work, and I think it's that important that we recommended that that be added in the utility fund. But again, that does not impact the general fund. Okay. So now we're going to switch over to more of the dollars and cents and financial policies, and I will turn that over to the Finance Director, Harjo, saying hi. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members of the community, Harjo Tsang is the Finance Director with the city. The next several slides will kind of talk about our liabilities and our financial numbers that are in the recommended budget, beginning with our workers' compensation. Back in March, we kind of shared with you that our workers' compensation is continuing to grow a liability. On this slide, we have kind of demonstrated what is happening to our workers' compensation claim costs. So just in comparison to a few years ago, where we had an average of about $700,000 we were paying in workers' compensation claims, that has increased, almost doubled in the current fiscal year to about 1.4, and is expected to increase to about 1.6, 1.7 by the end of fiscal year '27. And some of the notable causes that relate to the increase in liabilities, as well as the claim costs, are access insurance premiums. So insurance, as you know, generally, the insurance market has been heavily impacted, so our insurance premiums have gone up. With respect to specific to claims, three main components there is the claim frequency, which is the volume of claims, the claim severity, the increased medical costs, as well as in the severity of the claims, and then as well as the complexity, which is essentially how long they kind of stretch out and what additional support our workers' compensation program has required with respect to external legal support and so forth. So all of these are factors that are contributing to the workers' compensation program, and what you'll see is in our work plan, the workers' compensation program has a work plan item to how, you know, basically study what's contributing further to this and what are some strategic options that we can possibly address to get a better control or handle on controlling these costs. So that is worthy of an increase to mention because it is impacting our next two fiscal years' budget. These are unfunded pension liabilities. We talked about these back in March as well. There haven't been any, and this is no new information, the same as what we shared in March, our current unfunded accrued liabilities as of, you know, the last actuarial report, which is June 30, '23, stand at about $117 million. We do know CalPERS had a higher-than-anticipated investment return in fiscal year '24, and this slide illustrates what that does. Our unfunded accrued liability is projected to decrease from $117 to about $111 million. So that's, again, as of June 30, 2024. What ends up happening with CalPERS and their rate of return with respect to the current fiscal year, we'll be able to better talk about and actually forecast come, you know, come summer, sometime in July is when they'll release their preliminary report. We're hopeful that they will at least come in close to their 6.8 target. Anything shy of that will impact our unfunded accrued liability in a negative way, where thereby it will increase it. So we'll keep a close eye on that and communicate that with you. One of the things that the council has done with respect to addressing the pension liabilities is adopting a pension funding policy, which essentially sets aside dollars today in order to offset some of the future liabilities or payments. The trust has currently about $4.5 million on an annualized rate, is earning about 11% compared to this 6.8 with CalPERS. The next, again, these couple of slides are information that we're reiterating, so these are slides that you saw back in March. This slide essentially highlights the trend historical, as well as our forecast. Lighter blue is the actuals, so demonstrates our UAL, which is our unfunded accrued liability payment to CalPERS, how it has progressed from about 2018 of $4 million to the current 2025 of $9 million. We are anticipating to get additional increases over the next five years, especially in our fiscal year '29, we have an increase of about roughly $1 million from '28. So we also told you back in March that we are recommending to continue to fund the pension trust, and that at some point, we'll be able to leverage that trust to offset some of the increases in the UAL. As part of the budget development process, we have done just that. We have, we are leveraging in the forecast. Once we get there, we'll demonstrate that we are utilizing the pension trust, especially in fiscal year '29 onwards, to structurally keep the general fund in balance. So I think where we talked about this thing will come into fruition and will reap the benefits. I think we have built that into the forecast now, and as we progress over the next couple of years, we'll keep a close eye out, hopefully with a plan that if things go as planned, not only will we be utilizing it to structurally balance, but perhaps offset some of the negative, create some positive operating margins. So that would be the ideal goal, so we'll see how things progress.
I have a question. Can you go back this one slide? Okay. In the light blue, those are the actuals.
Yes.
Where am I missing the forecast for those years?
It's the darker blue. So '25 fiscal year is a 9.1. Our next fiscal year would be $10.4 million.
Right, but I'm just curious as how the actuals aligned from '27, '18 through '24, '25 with what you had forecasted for those.
This chart does not illustrate that, but it would be pretty much aligned because we received annually, every year, we receive forecasts from CalPERS based on their actual year report, and they'll tell us about two years ahead of what our payment is going to be in about two years, so.
Because you said it was not quite, I mean, we didn't, we're not having the expense we thought we had this year, is that what I heard you say?
Uh, no, I don't think I.
I thought you had said maybe go back a slide. Actual rate of return was 9.3. Oh, so they're projecting it to decrease. I thought it was, the actual had decreased from the projection. Okay. Mind that. Thank you.
It's just a point-in-time snapshot.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll talk about the dollars and cents. This slide presents the recommended budget citywide, all eight funds. So we have on the left-hand side, the eight different fund types that the city has. The next column over is the sources, otherwise the money coming in, the revenues. The column next to it is the uses, otherwise the expenditures, money going out, the difference between the two, and then the FTE is the full-time equivalent, how we're providing with respect to our positions, how they're allocated. So this chart is presented for fiscal year '26 and fiscal year '27. With respect to '26, we, across all funds, are budgeting to bring in about $178.6 million. And then on the out, money going outside, budgeting expenditures, we are budgeting about $207.2. How are we offsetting the net difference? It is essentially utilizing the fund balances across various different funds of about $28.6 million. Thereby, you see on the bottom line, the full 207.2 is budgeted from a structurally-balanced perspective, we're offsetting, utilizing some fund balances. And the question is, why are we utilizing the fund balances? It's because primarily within our capital improvement, capital development impact funds, we have a lot of accumulated fund balances to deliver a lot of CIP. Similarly, in our enterprise funds related to our utilities as well, we have accumulated fund balances, which we're programming in to deliver capital projects. And the FTE count essentially shows the number of personnel that are funded by the different fund types. Largely, our biggest operation is within the general fund. It includes all of our public safety folks, our general government, and most of our departments. And then with respect to fiscal year '27, similar budget. And then with respect to, to, uh, 20 fiscal year 27, similar budget, uh, similar strategy there as well. $206.6 million in expenditures, utilizing about $27.8 million of fund balance in, in the second year. Uh, now further breaking down the 178.6, uh, you know, what makes up that money coming in? This is the different, uh, types of categories by, uh, far and large. The two main primary categories are taxes, um, for the city as well as charges for services. So these include user fees, our, uh, development impact fees and things of that nature. Um, and then, um, taxes are projected to come in about 34%, charges for services about 36% in fiscal year 27. Similar trends for fiscal year 20, uh, 27 as well, for a total of 181.1. On the expenditure side of things, uh, how are we expending, uh, the dollars from a citywide on a category perspective? Again, uh, two large categories there, one is personnel. It's about 32% in fiscal year 26. And then the next category is capital outlay, which, uh, are, is our investment, one-time capital infrastructure across all funds. And then, um, materials and services is the third, uh, largest category, which is about 13% of, of the total citywide budget. Uh, similar trends for fiscal year 27 as well. Uh, the next few slides will focus on the general fund itself. So from a revenue perspective, uh, the number one category of revenue source for the general fund, uh, is taxes. So if you were to add up, um, all the different types of taxes here, it adds to about 76% of the revenue sources. Uh, we have previously communicated to the council that, um, sales tax has been the number one tax revenue generator for the city, uh, with respect to that, and that has actually changed given in fiscal year 25. Uh, property taxes will outpace, uh, the sales tax from a revenue share perspective. So property taxes are budgeted to come in at 22.9, which make up about 31% of the, the total general fund revenue budget. Similar in 27, sales tax is 20.4 with a minor slight increase, um, for fiscal year 27. That's relatively, uh, expected to remain flat for the next two years. Our utility user tax is the third largest tax revenue source, coming in at about 11%, followed by franchise and TOT. Uh, one thing to call out on the TOT, you'll note that we have 1.9 in fiscal year 26 and then a significant increase, uh, to 2.4 in fiscal year 27. And that's primarily because we are anticipating, we looked at as part of the budget development processes, we have about roughly four new hotel developments that are, uh, anticipated to come, um, come into the city that are at various stages of the development process. Um, what we have done in the forecast as well as the next year is we are anticipating one of those hotels to come online by fiscal year 27. And then in the forecast, um, we assume the second one of the four to come online by fiscal year 28. So we'll keep an eye on the other two. Again, they're, um, the first two are much further along in the development process as opposed to the, uh, other two that are still in a conceptual phase. So, um, that's an important item, uh, to call out with respect to the revenues here. And then the other revenue category, which is the 24%, primarily consists of, uh, user, user fees, development fees that, uh, public works, community development departments charge, and any kind of other intergovernmental revenue that we receive in the general fund. Uh, this slide highlights the general fund expenditures, uh, our largest category. Uh, and the general fund expenditure is personnel. That's again primarily related to delivery of services using staffing. Uh, so for, um, fiscal year 26, that'll be $54.2 million or 72% of the budget. And then similarly in fiscal year 27, 56.6, uh, million, again, 72%. The second and the third categories are materials and services and internal service charges, uh, that also, uh, deliver services across various departments that include fleet, facilities, IT services, and so forth. Uh, the capital outlay, uh, is much smaller compared to prior years. That's again, uh, the, the prior councils have put an emphasis on investing general fund dollars into the streets program. Uh, over the years, uh, we have identified funding, um, in, in the external funds, existing revenue sources in road, um, road, gas tax, SB1 monies that we have that can offset. We are essentially maintaining the streets investment at the desired levels. Uh, we're just swapping out the funding from general fund versus, uh, where those fund, uh, accumulated funds have been. So it's a strategic, it kind of helps strengthen the, strengthen the general fund and make some additional capital, um, investments with respect to the parks and things like that. Uh, this, uh, slide is the general fund forecast. This is the updated forecast. Um, this is where in March, we demonstrated that we had a negative operating margin, um, of about $1.5 million going to about $3 million in the outer years. A couple of things to point out here, uh, one is with respect to the operating margin. Uh, as we indicated, we, uh, you know, it's manageable, the operating margins, and we have successfully, uh, managed those operating margins. Uh, we took a, a deep dive into, uh, some of our revenues and I'll talk, talk about those assumptions in, in the, uh, next couple of slides. Um, and then the second thing to call out here is the fund balance as a percent. So the council has a minimum fund balance policy of 30% of, uh, annual expenditures to be set aside. Uh, the recommended budget for the next two year maintains that. In fact, the forecast for, um, through fiscal year 30, uh, 31 maintains that. Um, the question, uh, that I typically get is, well, if we have negative, uh, we have, you know, no negative or positive operating margins, how will come your fund balances continuing to decrease? And that's just a function of, as our expenditures, again, the policy states 30% of the given year's expenditure. So as our expenditures increase, our fund balance requirement also increases. So that $29 million that you see is just a function of a, of, of that expenditure. So, um, you know, that's, that's how that number is driven. But again, those two things, one is, uh, we're structurally balanced moving forward. Things are tight and, uh, we'll, uh, we'll cover those in the next couple of slides. Um, this is again, different way of looking at the same numbers. Uh, those were numbers on the previous chart, this is a graph. The, the blue bars show you the ending fund balance. Uh, the, the dark blue line shows you the total required reserves, uh, throughout. And again, just another way of illustrating that we are maintaining the required reserves throughout the forecast. Uh, talk about notable assumptions, you know, how did we kind of go ahead and address some of those operating margins? Uh, one is, uh, the stable growth in property taxes. So we are, uh, anticipating property tax to maintain the growth that it historically has about 4 to 5%. Um, and then the other is element of property taxes, which is access ERAF. Access ERAF is monies that annually allocation of property taxes goes to, uh, uh, to fund our, uh, education schools and so forth. And there is a state formula that establishes what that funding needs to be. Once that, uh, funding is achieved, uh, with respect to funding schools and, and community colleges, any access property taxes then, uh, reallocated back out to the taxing entities within the jurisdiction. Uh, this has been a access ERAF has, uh, used to be a very nominal amount coming out of, uh, you know, the 08, 09, uh, housing crisis that we had, but it has increased to a significant amount, uh, amounting to about $2.5 million. It has been continued to be challenged at the state level with respect to how it gets apportioned, how it gets calculated. Uh, we have been, uh, the county has been successful so far to fend off, uh, any kind of litigations and challenges. Um, so we are, um, we are continuing to be bullish on this front to state that if there are any changes with respect to the, um, any state, you know, enactions or mandates, that it would be on a going forward basis, but for now, we are budgeting 100% of receiving that access ERAF. So that's, uh, that's an element that we're continuing to rely on. Uh, with respect to sales tax, uh, we are again, remaining relatively flat for the next two years before returning to, yeah, did you have a question? Sure.
Before we move on to the, about the excess ERAF, um, I think it deserves sunlight because you, you said it comes with challenges and stuff like that, and that's 100% true. But can you also talk about how there's only certain, only, only a few of the counties in state of California actually get this? And we happen to be one of them.
Uh, we are one of the, uh, I believe, five.
Five.
Yeah.
So it's not, it's not like we have a bunch of people throughout the state saying, give us our money back. It was only five of us. And thankfully, like you said, the county took a huge lead and thankfully, we also have the speaker of the assembly who happens to be, you know, a part of our delegation. So all those things wrap in perfect to get that, that funding through, but I do expect that to continue to be a fight.
Yes, that's our expectation at this point. I believe there is a, uh, the county is trying to settle this once and for all with the state because the state's been going around every county to audit them and then give this finding. Unfortunately, the, uh, the case has now been deferred, the trials, uh, later this fall. So, uh, that leads us to believe again that we'll continue to receive this. And the county, in fact, here, uh, in Santa Clara County is leading the charge. So, uh, they have a, uh, a skin in the game as well because they also rely on this, uh, access ERAF to fund some of their services. So, uh, we're expecting a positive outcome when all is said and done. Uh, the at-risk amount is, you know, about 18%, which amounts to about $600,000. Uh, but again, I mean, $600,000 is, is a lot of money for, uh, from an ongoing revenue perspective, so.
Yeah, and, and most of the time this goes towards staffing, right? So like last year, it was like fiscal year 25, like we're going to hire two more police officers and a dispatcher. Let's get the excess ERAF and we put that huge fight into it, but it ended up giving us more public safety.
That's correct.
Along with it, so, thank you.
Uh, with respect to sales tax, uh, again, we are, uh, forecasting, uh, very conservative, uh, here just because of, uh, uh, the outlook remains very bleak, uh, with respect to growth of the sales tax. Uh, any positive changes obviously would be a cue, so we'll be taking a calculated, uh, approach there. Uh, or any further declines in sales tax, uh, would also be calculated as well. Uh, we don't expect that, but, uh, is yet to be seen. Uh, again, on the TOT front, uh, we are assuming two hotels to come online. One is included as part of the two-year budget, which is fiscal year 27. The second one is fiscal year 28 with respect to the forecast. Uh, on the Calp, uh, Calpers pension, uh, pension front, uh, I indicated that we did have negative operating margins in, uh, fiscal year 29 outwards. We are relying on the, uh, section 115 trust, uh, roughly about 1, uh, 1.3 million dollars over the course of three years that will help us, uh, offset, uh, those, those increases. And last but not least is the salary, uh, savings. As I, uh, you know, mentioned before, the general fund's most significant, uh, expenditure category is personnel-related, about 72%. So naturally, because we're delivering services utilizing personnel, um, you know, we have typically vacancies, retirements, uh, or other factors. So we are assuming roughly about 8%, uh, based on historical trends, uh, of about five years. So that, that is also baked into the forecast as well. Uh, that concludes the general fund. I'll focus next on the enterprise funds, which are water and wastewater. Uh, with respect to wastewater, uh, the, uh, primary source type is charges for services. These are utilities that are rate pair funded. Uh, on the wastewater front, we're expecting, uh, 15.6 million dollars in '26 and 16.2 million dollars in '27, which make up, uh, uh, primarily the most, uh, most amount of the, the revenues. And this does include the, uh, reflect the council adopted, uh, rate increases. On the expenditure, uh, type front, we have our, uh, personnel expenditures, which are at $3.1 million, uh, dollars on the wastewater, uh, counting about roughly 15% in fiscal year 26. Uh, the large category there you see of interfund transfers, uh, is essentially our transfer out to the SCRAF fund from the wastewater with respect to the, uh, city of Gilroy's share of running the SCRAF plant. Because we do the accounting, we do the books, um, on, on, on the city of Gilroy's, uh, ledgers, this shows up as a interfund transfer out. Uh, one thing to call out, uh, with respect to the SCRAF plant operations, you may have read this in the, and we highlighted this in the budget messages. Uh, because we have invested heavily in the expansion plant, uh, the plant is now ready to be commissioned. So we are expecting the plant will be commissioned with, uh, in the next year, fiscal year 26. Thereby, it will increase both member agencies' operating costs, uh, by about 20 to 24%. So, uh, that is reflected in this, uh, in this budget as well that we have put out for the next two years. Uh, all in all, we're looking to expand $20.7 million, uh, in fiscal year 26 and then $25.6 million in fiscal year 27 within our wastewater operations. On the water operations side again, uh, our largest, uh, category of revenues, uh, continues to be charges for services, uh, projected to come in at 16.3 million, roughly 91% of the 17.9, and then 17.2 million, uh, roughly 93% of the 18.5 in fiscal year 27. This too, similar to the wastewater, reflects the council approved rates, uh, over the next, uh, next two years. On the expenditure side of things, uh, personnel is budgeted at 4.6, accounting about 18% of the $25.4 million. Uh, the largest category really, uh, in our water side is going to be capital outlay. This is the, uh, planned investments, uh, on the capital projects, uh, on our, on our water program. Uh, all in all, we're looking to expand $25.4 million in '26 fiscal year and $24.2 million in fiscal year 27. That concludes the financial, uh, presentation and, uh, we'll be getting ready to dive into the departmental presentations before I hand it over. Happy to answer any additional questions that you may have.
Can I hear any questions? No questions?
I have a, I have one, if you could go back.
Sure.
To sales tax and comment, if you can give some perspective on sales tax. I know you were saying it's down slightly, down slightly, down slightly, or flat?
Sure, yeah, so, um, I'll, I'll give you a broader, um, sales tax. Coming out of the, um, COVID era, we had influx of a lot of economic stimulus money that, um, that played, um, the sales tax component. It really increased our sales tax. We peaked, uh, our sales tax peaked to about $22 million in fiscal year 22. Uh, since '22, our sales taxes gradually declined. We're roughly at about, um, $20 million, um, you know, this fiscal year and we're expecting to be in the similar range, uh, for the next two years. And that's primarily because, one, this economic money, the stimulus money has worked itself through the, uh, through the economy. And then number two is a lot of the household budgets are being consumed by other elements that are not taxable. Uh, so things like insurance, housing, utilities, uh, so there, uh, as we have seen in our personal lives, our insurance, personal insurances, uh, you know, with respect to cars and, and homes and our PG&E bills and so forth. So those continue to, um, increase and consume a larger share of the discretionary income. So there's naturally less money to be available to be expended on consumable goods. Um, and then other is just more of, uh, nature of just, you know, household expenditures transitioning to more subscription-based type of services or purchase of actual goods and things like that. So those are elements until we see some sort of either, you know, discretionary incomes increasing to thereby allow, uh, more dollars to be expended into the, into the economy, uh, that would, that would be, uh, a sign.
Okay, I have one more question before I go, go left. Uh, could you, is there any chance you can go back before COVID by memory? Like, tell us what, what the sales tax was like? I know it's probably not on your data here.
Yeah, it's not on here, uh, but I believe it has been, uh, ranging from anywhere from, uh, you know, 18 to 20 million dollars pre-COVID. And then, again, uh, after, during, during the onset of COVID, it declined, uh, to, I want to say, probably sub-17 million dollars or so. And then we had a gradual increase, sharp increase, uh, '21, '22, we clocked in at about $22 million, the highest, uh, in the recent years.
I'm just trying to put it in perspective, this, uh, just might be my own, the only way I'm trying to wrap my mind around it that, but $20 million in revenue in 2017 is significantly different than $20 million in 2025.
Yes, yeah, and that goes to say that we were, you know, sales tax was the number one tax, primary tax category, although volatile as, as we can see. Um, you know, naturally, uh, in our finance world, we, we love to say, yeah, any, any city that can rely on property taxes is their primary tax source, is a stable city. So we're, we're seeing some reflection of that.
But when you say volatile, like, when I hear that word, I would think that you would say 25 or 30% swings. You don't, doesn't mean that you mean that, right?
Uh, volatile in the sense that anytime there is going to be any, um, any sort of discretionary spending tightening, as if we would in our personal household, somebody loses a job, we tighten our belt right away. If you're, um, the consumers are tightening their belt, uh, that's less dollars, uh, that the city's going to receive. And that's a immediate impact within a two to three month period from when the transaction occurs and actually the city receives the money. Whereas property tax or other revenue, uh, you know, tax sources, you would have a prop rate adjustment, which typically adjusts one year at a time, uh, from a tax revenue. So volatile in that sense that, uh, if there is a spend down, decline in spending, we'll, we'll see, feel the impacts within three to four month period and vice versa. If there is a increase in spending, we'll, we'll see the, the revenue increase as well.
Okay, uh, who was, Heather, hand up first here, you're last.
So I want to talk, uh, just real briefly about the, the city council policies, the budget that we have set up. So the section 115, you said 25%, that's per council policy that, that we take the excess, um, you know, budget.
Year-end savingship, we put it into the, uh, we put it into the section 115 trust. Historically, it's been about half a million dollars, um, that we set aside by policy.
And we've, and we've stated that we wanted a 30% reserve, right? For no matter what, go up and down. Um, so, you know, we heard from public comment talking about, you know, maybe pursuing another council policy direction. Um, maybe it's, maybe it's putting 1% to 3% of our, of our excess, you know, or money left over. Basically, this, the savings forever comes at the end of the year, um, and put that towards parks, let's say. Um, and, and I think that right now, as we, as you've already mentioned in the, um, in the budget, as we start diving deeper into our, our parks citywide, I think we're going to find that there's a lot of deferred maintenance. Um, I think that having a continual funding source to go, go right after infrastructure, um, and the parks might help. But where does staff expect us to, as legislators, to come up with a policy or even propose a policy, uh, funding level like that? When would you expect us to do that? Would you expect us to do that before June 2nd, like at the May 19th meeting? Or like try to put it on our legislative agenda? Or like try to put it on our legislative agenda so we can start talking about it, maybe over the course of a year of, you know, what what percentage might look right and?
Yeah, I'll defer I'll defer to city administrator for this on that.
Thinking about Councilmember Hilton, the council can revisit its its reserve policy at any time, so I would suggest that it goes on our work plan to do because any adjustment takes time, takes analysis, things like that. I don't think we'd be in a position to get you good information here in the next few weeks, but it is something we could add to the work plan if that's the will of the council.
So is the is the policy, are like, is, because I've never seen it, is this like, is it just a legislative file that's come from those previous meetings? Or do we actually have, like, all of us together have an actual policy with, like, Section one fifteen reserve?
It's in the form of various resolutions.
It's in resolution.
Accompanied resolutions over the course of, you know, many years. So I believe the general fund forecast was twenty seventeen is when council revisited this topic holistically and adopted the thirty percent.
So just a heads up to my colleagues, this is something that, you know, I'd like to maybe explore and talk about at our May nineteenth meeting of maybe allocating, like we said, this is not allocating anything out of our budget, but it sounds like the parks, the recreation fund is doing very well on its own. Maybe it could use a little boost, maybe that could be, like I said, one percent, three percent, but it'd be nice to have that on our work plan to be able to look at that. So, thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Ramirez?
So you talked a lot about the impact on sales tax having a direct correlation to the economy and things like that. Agree a hundred percent. Previously, when I've been at council meetings and they talked about the sales tax, it talked a lot about the the impact of closing of some of the stores at the outlets and things like that. Can you talk about, you know, is is that the same, you know, are we are we getting more stores filled in there? Are we, you know, having closures? How how much of an impact is that having right now on our our sales tax?
Gosh, I I won't have the details for that, but we're happy to go ahead and dive into that and bring that information forward. But does it have a direct correlation? Absolutely it does. Our two main categories of sales tax generation are are retail and transportation.
Right.
So they're the lion's share of our sales tax. So any impact with respect to any major significant, you know, dealership's closing could have a material impact to our sales tax. Again, I would have to better understand with respect to the size of the store and how much they're actually bringing in, if it's material or not, but but in concept, yes.
Okay, but but just, I'm I'm just assuming that you didn't make reference to it, that it's not as significant maybe as it had been? Or is this the economy having more of an impact and that's the focus now and the concern?
I I think it's from the broader concerns are more of macro levels. So as opposed to, you know, specific to Gilroy, obviously it has a trickle-down effect. So I think we're seeing this not just Gilroy, but across the board and across the state. Many cities are are seeing this slowdown happening for the same various reasons.
And then I would assume that if car dealerships do close, which could happen.
It's happened in the past.
Yeah. Do you see a trend elsewhere where that is starting to happen?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not yet, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Klein?
Getting back to the one fifteen trust, in the graph you show contributions from twenty-five through thirty. Is that, basically, that's the projected, that recommendation, right?
Yeah, so.
And really to hit that mark so to protect us come that moment, right?
That's correct, yeah. So we're assuming that we, after twenty thirty, we won't need to contribute, rather we'll be just pulling out of the pension trust to offset expenses.
So it's important to contribute to that.
Leading up to that.
Leading up to that, okay.
Yep.
Before you move on, I'm just going to leave with one comment. I think this is why this council has been so interested in economic development because, again, this, the idea that we're at twenty million dollars in sales tax revenue and we were at that in two thousand sixteen or seventeen, about, about, is, I think, when you, again, when you throw in the the cost of what it takes to run a city today compared to two thousand sixteen, all of a sudden that twenty million dollars becomes a lot less valuable than it looks like. That's why it's important that we, as a council, figure out a way to diversify our revenue. Just not a question, just a comment, yes. Councilmember Bracco.
I think we also need to keep our eyes open with the outlets. Every time you go by there, there's more stores closed. They have more empty stores now than they have occupied. So I think the reality is probably in the next couple of years, we're going to be hit hard when we lose that sales tax. So it's something I think we ought to plan for.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Mayor and Council, Bryce Atkins, here to present the Administration Department's budget slides. As the Administration Department exists to provide strategic leadership to the city organization, as well as work with the city council, develop and implement its policies. It does this through seven different offices that are listed here on the slide. There are two that I want to bring special attention to, first being economic development, the fifth bullet. And so there's a recommendation in the proposed budget to stand up economic development as its own department. And then last, just after some of the public comment that we see earlier, recreation is included in the budgets under the Administration Department as one of its offices and divisions. And so it's supported in total by eighteen full-time employees in the proposed, in the recommended budget. There's fourteen positions current currently, four positions are recommended being added, which City Administrator Forbes already mentioned, Economic Development Director and the three recreation positions, and we'll go over those here shortly. So the budget summary, in two thousand twenty-six, the total budget is seven point six million and twenty-seven, it decreases down to seven point one million. Some of the key differences include increases in economic development for the additional position, recreation for a capital project that we'll discuss shortly, as well as additional staffing, and the city clerk, you'll see about a doubling between twenty-six and twenty-seven, that's for the extra expenses for that election cycle. A important note, the recreation department funds, aside from the one point five million, it's the general fund, the rest is special revenue. So accomplishments, the Administration Department has implemented Gilroy Connect using C Click Fix to enhance customer service. It is a, it has a great start and has continued to develop and be modified to enhance its performance as we go. We've also worked to support and implement council's transition to district-based elections. We're looking to, on the commencement of the Civic Center Master Plan and completed the three point nine million dollar Gourmet Alley Project. Additional accomplishments with grant funding, updated technology in the Emergency Operations Center and improved emergency management capabilities, including resilience efforts. We've also also updated the city's emergency operations plan and expanded our community emergency response team, including training classes held in Spanish. In recreation, we've served nearly ten thousand residents in recreation programs, added additional summer day camps, including at Gilroy Gardens, and distributed more than twenty-one thousand dollars in youth scholarships to two hundred sixty-one participants living in Gilroy. The recommended budget maintains existing service levels with a couple of key enhancements. First and foremost is adding the Economic Development Director. You'll notice that fiscal year twenty-six is about half the salary amount as the fiscal year twenty-seven. This is to ramp up time to create the job descriptions, personnel commission, and then recruitment. We also have a hundred fifty thousand dollars included to cover the waiving of special event fees, allowing more community groups to host events that may not have been able to afford afford to to host those events with the fees. As mentioned, we're adding three positions, recreation, a manager analyst, a recreation supervisor, and a recreation coordinator, and then adding a part-time communication specialist in our communications engagement office. And then finally, there's a new social media data analytics and communications engagement recorder system combined for eleven thousand five hundred. We are also including infrastructure investments of eight hundred thousand dollars for pickleball courts at Los Onomos Park, is estimated to be able to produce four courts. And then there's an additional recreational infrastructure project that will be identified and planned in fiscal year twenty-six to commence in fiscal year twenty-seven with additional amounts of these recreation funds that have been pooled. We'll come back to council at some point in the mid-cycle to talk about getting approval from council and with Parks Recreation Commission input. And so the budget is supposed to meet several council priorities, financial resilient organization through continued grant writing services that are that are managed through the Administration Department, as well as funding economic and downtown development, more specifically, the director-level position, continue supporting the development of the ICE Center and the five hundred thirty-six acre property on Hacker Pass. And then the new Economic Development Director will be assessing the economic development plans and strategy to make updates and revise the approach to enhance the economy of the city. We also are maintaining and improving city infrastructure with the new pickleball courts at Los Onomos Park and then furthering the city's vision by being an inclusive community, having a thriving downtown, recreational opportunities for all ages, and a balanced economy. That completes the presentation. Happy to address any questions or comments.
Go ahead, Councilmember Marks.
Bryce, where where would it be appropriate to talk about the eight hundred thousand dollars for four pickleball courts? Should we, can I question it now or do you want me to do it in the C I P part?
I think we probably feel the, it depends on the question. If it's getting to the technical, then we.
I would like to know, I mean, I'm for the pickleball courts, but where did the eight hundred thousand dollar amount come from?
Sure, so it's coming from the recreation fund.
No, 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 no. How did you determine that the cost was going to be eight hundred thousand?
Oh, sorry, yes, we worked with the city engineer and the public works director to develop an estimate for those costs.
Okay, that amount is way off. I called Saviano today, who did tennis courts, and he is a leading pickleball developer all around the area. For four courts, it's a hundred and twenty thousand. So I'm bringing that up because I'm really afraid that when everyone hears eight hundred thousand, they're going to kill it. And that, so whoever the engineer was, they're way off. I would advise you to look at a contractor and get a real accurate amount because that makes it doable for four courts than the eight hundred.
Councilmember Marks, I'll defer that estimate to John Doughty when he does the C I P, but one thing to consider is it may not just be for the pickleball courts themselves. There's infrastructure in that area, so when we get to the C I P portion and our our public works director can tell you where those costs are.
Great, thank you.
How they're generated.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Hilton.
Thanks, Bryce. So one of the things that I that I I want you guys to also envision, especially as we get into the Economic Development Director, is that is, you know, we spent a year-long doing advertisement for economic development in the Silicon Valley Business Journal, right? Where we place ads. And so there's all these different strategic things that we can be doing around the region, but oftentimes it requires us to like show up in person to be on just the ad. And one of those examples was earlier this year, we, you know, we sent a delegation, it was staff and electeds that that went to the Silicon Valley, sorry, went to the Silicon Valley Joint Venture Annual Conference, right? And there were several other cities that were there too, it was nonprofits and and others and such too, but one of the cool things that that I got to see out there is not only were all of us out there engaging and meeting and bumping into other people and bringing resources back here to Gilroy, as in fact, the mayor brought a resource back to Gilroy, but several that sponsored the table got their logos put on the pamphlets, the flyers, the website, and one specific one was the city of Morgan Hill. Now, they didn't choose to put the city of Morgan Hill's website on there, they chose to put their economic development website on there. So year-round, anybody can go back and be like, oh, you know, oh, city of Gilroy is one of the sponsors, they click on that, and I think it's choose Morgan Hill or whatever it is. So examples like that, I think, are important. There's other ones that are going on around the region, even south of us, that are happening, and I think that's something that that is worth it. Sometimes sponsoring could, you know, be several thousand dollars or whatever, but like I said, the the joint venture one is one that stays there for for an entire year, sort of like as a placeholder. So I just, I want to start getting in the in the habit of that. Thank you.
Councilmember Ramirez?
So can you please talk to me a little bit about these three recreation positions and what they will be tasked with and how the revenue might align with that and correlate with those staff positions?
Sure, so let me start with the, I'll start with the manager analyst position. So it's it's an office, office-based position, and its its value add is alleviating our recreation staff. So currently, our staff that provides services are also doing the analysis, also doing heavy administrative lifting for the division. And so thought is by having this dedicated person to handle that, it alleviates that task from those that are actually providing services. And so it frees up their staff time to reinvest back into providing programming, working with contractors to provide contract classes, which also ultimately the contract classes drive the revenue that pays for the positions as well. The the recreation supervisor will be taking on a lot of additional additional work, kind of higher level than the recreation coordinator, still working, I believe, with Adaptive on some of their efforts, also working with contract classes. And then the recreation coordinator will be additionally doing additional recreation courses as as they go. I believe one of them is handling youth services as well, if there's any elaboration, reservations as well, thank you, which is also a revenue driver. And so those are the three positions.
So, and how do these line up with the the direction that we gave a few months ago about bringing back the swim program?
Yeah, so these.
Or looking at other options of providing that?
Yeah, so that effort is still underway for for the analysis. These positions would not be in aquatics at this point in time. The budget is proposed, continues the aquatics contract until we receive alternative direction from council after this analysis.
So this it, this, these positions have nothing to do with the aquatics program?
At this time, no.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have another question. Bryce, could you go back to the slide that it talks about the Economic Development Director's salary? I just have one question. Okay, um, so in twenty-six, the person's going to make a hundred and thirty-five thousand a year? Am I reading this incorrectly?
No, it's the hundred thirty-five thousand represents approximately about half a year of salary.
Oh, half a year.
There is anticipated lead-up whenever we have a new position to create the recruitment flyers, work with the personnel commission to develop the job description and classifications, then we have the advertising of the position, the recruitment process, so.
So then we're hoping by January then of twenty-six, we have an Economic Development Director, and then that would be halfway through the fiscal year. Is that, is that correct or no?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you, Bryce.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the Gilroy community, Leanne McPhillips. I'm going to talk about the Administrative Services Department. This department contains three different functions that are primarily internal service to the organization, but some outward-facing services. Facility services, supporting fifty-seven city-owned buildings, there's five employees. Fleet services, four hundred and twenty-five vehicles and mechanical equipment assets, and that's done with four full-time employees and one part-time employee. And then in human resources and risk management, we are providing a full range of human resources services to all departments and about three hundred employees. We also manage our insurance, claims, and risk management services, and we do that with five full-time employees and two part-time employees. This is our budget summary, it proposed for fiscal year twenty-six and twenty-seven, and it's just a slight increase from our current fiscal year due to just increased employee costs. Some accomplishments to highlight for facilities, we coordinated modifications at the Teak Building so it could be utilized as a temporary fire station until the Santa Teresa Station is built. We completed the City Hall Emergency Generator Project, worked on office modifications and office moves for engineering, human resources, and utilities, and then the solar power installation project at four city locations, which is nearing completion. In fleet, we procured and outfitted forty new vehicles across all city departments, and we have two new fire department engines that are under construction, a Type six and a Type three, that will be receiving soon, September twenty-five, for the Type six is what we're expected, and the Type three in February of twenty-six. And then the fleet group transitioned to paperless work order and maintenance record processing. In human resources and risk management, we conducted eighty-eight recruitments, processed over twenty-two hundred applications, and onboarded a hundred and eleven new employees in an eighteen-month period. We also implemented a new employee referral program, and we coordinated over eighteen-hundred hours of citywide training on a variety of topics, and we also provided some training grants to our employees that were seeking additional specialized training. And then we achieved a positive score, ninety-nine point seven percent, to be specific, on our workers' comp claims audit, and we also earned the lowest experience modification. audit, and we also earned the lowest experience modification score, a .683, within our general liability risk pool. That's important, because that means that our, our general liability claims are, are the lowest amongst those in our risk pool, and had that number been higher, our insurance premiums would be even impacted more than what we're seeing just because of the hard insurance market. So having good claims experience does matter in the equation of things. We're maintaining our existing core level of services for our employees and the organizations, and we're not proposing any changes to our current staffing levels. Some enhancements to note, we are in the process of negotiating new MOUs with our labor groups. Right now, we are currently in negotiations with our Gilroy Police Officers Association and the Gilroy Management Association, which you all know, and we're focused on the recruitment and retention of our employees. We're using one-time funds to continue to replace our fleet where necessary. We are proposing 30 vehicles to be replaced in this two-year budget, and we're using, we're proposing also to get some new fleet tracking software to keep better records and to make the record-keeping more efficient in the fleet shop. And then in facilities, we're proposing to use some one-time funds to make improvements to our city facilities. As you know, we have aging facilities, and we have a lot of emergency repairs, so we're continuing to do our best to maintain those facilities, to, to get beyond any improvements that need to happen. And then we're going to be monitoring our solar power purchase agreement to track our electrical savings from the implementation of the solar project. Some investments that we're proposing in the budget, like I said, we're purchasing 30 vehicles over the two years. 1.1 million of that is in our utilities area, and 1.8 million in our general and fleet funds. And then in facilities, just general repairs, $300,000, just to keep up our city facilities that, you know, have those emergency things that come up that we just need to repair throughout the two-year budget. We're also identifying about 155,000 for sidewalks around city facilities. We have our own repairs that we need to make, as we're the owner of the property. We need to replace our annex server room HVAC, and then we need to do some parking lot resurfacing. You can see in the photo there, that's Hornline Court parking lot that we own, and that, it's in dire need of resurfacing. This aligns with some of our council priorities, maintaining and improving the city's infrastructure. So we want to have safe, reliable, reliable vehicles for our employees to utilize when they're delivering services to the community, and we want our facilities and buildings to be safe, and we want them to have the best useful life possible, so we've got to maintain those in order to make that happen. And then we're trying to be a customer-friendly and effective organization, providing great services to our community, and how we do that is through our most important resource, and that's our employees. We are trying to fill any of our vacant positions with awesome new employees, and we want to maintain a well-trained, happy, and committed workforce to deliver services to the community. Those things are important. Having a positive employee culture here in our organization is what makes this a fun place to work and helps retain our employees. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Councilmember Ramirez.
So you said that you had 88 new recruitments and on, or 88 recruitments and onboarded 111 new employees?
Mm-hmm.
That's a third of your staff. That just seems like a really high number.
It's over an 18-month period. We, that's how many different recruitments we conducted, and how many new employees we brought onboard, and that's full-time and part-time employees.
So, I'm assuming that's not 111 new positions, then?
No, it is not 111 new positions.
And about, like, how many of those were, like, retirement?
Well, a majority of our full-time position turnover is due to retirements, so there, you know, several of, you know, so a big chunk of our recruitments are refilling positions that are vacated by retirements. I don't have the complete breakdown chart of all 111 and what created that vacancy. Some of those are new positions that were approved, so there never was anybody in the position, and we're recruiting that position for the first time. And sometimes there's recruitments that we utilize and actually hire more than one person from that recruitment, so that's why the onboarding number is higher than the recruitment number.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Klein, did you have a?
I have a question back on the fleet page. I think something about 1.8 million for fleet and 30 new vehicles, you just passed it. So the 30-vehicle replacement over two years, that's coming up, correct? That's, is that what you're suggesting is coming up?
Yes, that's what we've proposed in the fiscal year '26 and '27 budget.
And then the 1.8 million is what it costs to do all that?
From the general fund and the fleet fund, yes. And then there's 1.1 million that will come from water, sewer, and scraw funding.
And, and all, and all of that investment in, in fleet, I mean, those are what it, it is what it says, right? There are vehicles with wheels, not other types of equipment?
Yeah. It's, it's, these are 30 vehicles.
Okay. Have you ever, in your history, have you ever been through a time where you just don't buy new equipment for a couple of years?
Yes, we have been there.
Yeah. Okay. And, and what happens?
What happens? We end up having, in, we're in the place where we're in right now, where we're having a lot of vehicles reaching their, end of their useful life all at the same time. So one of the other things that we're planning as a work plan item in this fiscal year's budget is to develop a vehicle replacement schedule and process, and then look to setting aside money in our fleet fund, so we spread the cost out over, you know, a more even, stable time period, rather than having high, high periods of time where we need to purchase and then we drop off. Because we, because we held off buying vehicles, you know, post-COVID, because we had no money to be able to purchase vehicles, we ended up having a lot of vehicles needing replacement all at one time. So in this two-year budget that we're just finishing now, you saw that we replaced 40 vehicles, and now we're looking to replace 30, because we, you know, the vehicles are just reaching the end of their useful life, and, and they're not, you know, safe to operate, so we're finding ourselves needing to replace those.
Does everything you buy new, or some used?
We buy some used.
Okay. And then, could you go back to the page where Councilmember Ramirez talked about, yeah, the 111?
Mm-hmm.
I don't have facts or figures or anything, but my intuition is the same thing. It ju, it just seems high, based on the amount of employees we have, so maybe some other time that we could maybe get further information-
Yeah.
-to justify or rationalize that?
Yeah, we ran a report of anyone with date of hire in that window of time, so that's where that number comes from.
No, I know, okay, I know, okay, the-
You're also for a break.
Yeah, of-
Yeah.
Yeah, incomparables maybe to other cities and things like that.
Okay.
And not today, not today, I'm just saying down, down the road.
Sure. Mm-hmm.
Okay, no further questions. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Fine.
All right, I'll be presenting the Finance Department budget, and here's a picture of a few of our finance folks participating in Halloween last year, and the theme was apps. The Finance Department are, the purpose or the intent of the department is to provide timely and accurate financial information and full range of technology-based resources and services to the council, departments, and the community at large. The key notable functions within the Finance Department are accounts payables, this is money going out the door, we pay the bills, accounts receivable, this is the money that we bill, or the money coming into the city. Budget, the process that we're currently undergoing, we go facilitate the budget development and the ongoing monitoring of the budget. The GL accounting and reporting, this is our financial audited financial reports and any other mandated reports that we do to the other agencies or the state. Payroll is our in-house function, we issue payroll on a monthly basis for all of our employees, we process that in-house. Investments and debt service relate to primarily our idle cash, that needs to be invested, and debt service is all of our outstanding debt that we have, we pay the mortgage on that on an annual basis. From a billing perspective, our largest function is our utility billing, as the city provides our water and wastewater services, we do the billing and collections in-house. And last but not least is the Information Technology Division, that includes our IT staff, that supports various departments across the organization. In total, are recommended to be supported by 22 FTEs. From a numbers perspective, our recommended budget is about 8.2 million for both fiscal years, this includes some capital investments within our IT, IT technology funds. So from a function department, IT technology is our largest, most significant, because it includes all the telecommunications, the cable, the internet, the software systems, and so forth, for all the departments. From an accomplishment perspective, with the current budget cycle, annually, we do submit to the Government Finance Officers, which is GFOA, and the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers for awards for our financial audited financials, as well as a budget. The department did receive the awards for the last two budget cycles. From a services perspective, council previously basically adopted a policy and asked us that we transition away from absorbing the credit card fees at the city level and actually pass those on to the users of those payment methods. So Finance Department facilitated that transition across the various platforms to implement that change. With respect to the city's internal city purchase card program, a very heavy paper-based method, we leverage technologies to transition essentially to electronic submission, review, and approval process, so that has resulted in faster processing, quicker, you know, turnarounds, and, and more appropriate and quicker recording of those transactions into the financial systems. With respect to the utility rates, we implemented, the council adopted water and wastewater rates based on the rate study. We have procured the utility customer water usage reporting and monitoring portal. In the current budget cycle, council approved a study, basically an audit of TOT, transient occupancy tax. We commenced that in the current fiscal year, which is just about to be finished, and we expect to be able to share those findings later this summer. And then the other investment that the council made was with respect to the transition of the business license program to a third-party administrator, and as a result of that contract and transition, not only did we bring the business license program online with the ability to apply and renew the licenses online, they also enhanced the compliance for that. As a result, over the last two years, we were able to get 400, or more than 400 new businesses to comply, which were otherwise not accurately registered or reporting within the city. So those are some of the finance accomplishments within the IT front. We completed the business resiliency-related elements of the strategic plan, notably the internet capacity. That's because we, council made significant investments in our ERP systems, our land management systems, which are hosted environments and require us to use internet to access those services, thereby we needed to enhance our internet capacity as well. We also implemented the cybersecurity training program, which is a recommendation out of the assessment. Council also authorized the transition of our geographic information systems to in-house. We were a hosted contracted service provider, but now we, we have our own in-house GIS person, as well as migrated the server environment in-house. Last but not least, we completed the evaluation selection and the procurement for completing various other cybersecurity assessment recommendations. From a service levels and resources perspective, the recommended budget maintains existing service levels with minor enhancements, primarily addition of an accounting assistant position within the utility billing. That's again, due to the increased customer base in our utilities folks and the increase for customer service demands, both in-person and, and online, we're recommending addition of the accounting assistant position. Other some one-time enhancements or recommendations, we are recommending to conduct a citywide user fee study. You'll recall, we conducted one in 2021, 2022, where we adopted, updated all citywide user fee studies. At that time, we had told you that we would do a comprehensive, full-blown study every five years, so those five years lands within this next two-year budget cycle, so we are recommending that we pursue that citywide user fee study. The other element is the business license program. We are recommending that council study the business license program currently. The approach here is twofold. One is our, the code itself, the ordinance, is very outdated, it's written primarily, mostly substantially in the 70s, 80s, with some minor adjustments in the 90s, so there is a, there is a need to modernize the language in itself, and then there's some additional items, as we have implemented the program in the recent years, some items have come up that we think the council may want to make some adjustments. So one is to modernize it, and then the second element is if the council so desires this, any kind of, from a financial standpoint, see what the program earns generates from a tax law perspective today, and then if there is any consideration to make any adjustments to, you know, increase those, to study those elements. The third item you see there is the Financial Transparency Portal. Right now, we are delivering a lot of reporting to you in a very narrative-heavy, you know, on an ad hoc basis with the increased ask for transparency. We are recommending that we implement a electronic portal where we're able to provide this information electronically, perhaps on a more frequent basis. Right now, we're doing this on a, on a quarterly basis, so we, we're recommending that, that be included. And last but not least, there's some one-time IT infrastructure improvements, notably about 1.3 million over the course of the next two years. It'll include our Wi-Fi upgrades across all city facilities, storage upgrades for our production servers, enhancements to the systems that we procured over the last several years, cybersecurity plan implementation, as well as just overall equipment and data device refresh. So we have a IT lifecycle policy now, which dictates when servers are going to be updated, when the laptops and computers are to be updated, so the dollars budgeted in there include, include the lifecycle policy. Last but not least is the continued enhancement of the GIS program. As I indicated, we brought the function in-house, and we are excited to see what the next step is and what the capabilities are. From a council priority perspective, with respect to developing a financially resilient organization, I think adding the accounting assistant position within the utility billing team to ensure that our utility billing function keeps up. We're completing the TOT audit, and then we'll share those findings with the council with respect to what those are this summer. And then the third one is the modernization, again, the, the revamping the city's business license program. From a city infrastructure perspective, again, it's the 1.3 million, notably within the IT, that we'll be investing to maintain, maintain the infrastructure with respect to cybersecurity. Aligning ourselves to the city's mission to be customer-friendly and effective, and provide excellent municipal services, and have engaged community. Twofold here, we're looking at actually implementing the system that we're procuring for the customer water usage reporting, as well as the transparency portal, so both of those will continue to provide that information to the, to the community on a, on a portal perspective. That concludes the Finance Department's presentation. Happy to answer any questions. Councilmember Ramirez?
Can you go back? You don't have to go back on the slide, just, I have a question about the, the TOT compliance review. Was, you know, that was obviously started before I came onboard. Is it that you, the city feels that we're not collecting what we should be collecting on that, and how is that reported? Is it just up to the hotels to self-report, if you will?
Sure. Great question, yes. So what transpired is, all of those, all of the above is the general answer. Typically, it's recommended every few years, you have some sort of a compliance review program. We haven't, obviously, we're impacted by COVID, we haven't done it in years, so it was recommended. That's one. The other is TOT revenue, you know, never really recovered, so we just wanted to make sure, you know, the reporting and the collection is happening timely. Few of the operators have changed hands, so anytime you have a change in hand, things get lost in translation. All that to say, I think it's a multi-pronged approach, but generally speaking, it's a good practice for cities to have some sort of a review, compliance review periodically. In this initial effort, we included all the operators, you know, we have roughly about 16, 17 operators within the city, so we'll get everyone for a three-year look, look-back period, review that, ensure everyone understands what the ordinance requirements are, to ensure that they're, they're reporting and collecting adequately. And moving forward, we probably won't do every, every operator on an annualized basis, perhaps some sort of a cycle, X number of operators every year or every other year.
And just, and I, I'm putting you on the spot right now, my apologies, so if you just don't know the answer, I appreciate that, but it's my understanding that we have in the region, in the area, this lowest TOT tax?
Um, or, yeah, I don't have the data to, to support that, but I believe we are probably on the, on the lower end. We have the 9%, and then in addition to the 9%, we have the T-bid that we collect, but all that revenue goes to the, the T-bid, the Gilroy. Does it go right? But that, that's probably true, but I, I can, I can probably get back to you.
And has there, you know, would it be worthy to do an analysis of the, the local area to see if we're, you know, on par with our neighbors?
With respect to the TOT rate, sure. I mean, that's an easy enough analysis that we can, we can do and return back. With respect to any changes to the TOT rate?
Has to go to the tax.
That would have to be...
To the ballot.
Right. And then, and then the council would have to basically direct us if that is an interest, if you wish to pursue that. And we'll give you an analysis of what potentially that might generate and is it worth pursuing or not.
Thank you.
Can you give a couple of examples when you do compliance checks? Like how, how detail, what's, what is that like? You go to the operator and say, open your books?
Essentially. No. So a couple of things. We, we contract with a third-party service provider or the auditors. Basically, in this case, that do these on a day-in, day-out basis. And the elements they review are essentially that. They'll, obviously not every single month, they'll select a sample of the period across the board for various different operators and ask them to provide support out of their records and then what they reported to us. And then, again, it's a review of what was reported, what was generated by them, produced by them, and then just their analysis and understanding of the markets within the region. So it's a multi, again, multi-factor study that they do. And then they'll put out some findings, if you will. We'll review those findings. And then if we sign off on them, they'll go ahead and notify and work with the operator and so forth.
What happens if you find that you're in a large disagreement?
We, we haven't had that experience yet, but we may end up in that case this summer. And then I think at that point, we'll have that discussion with the council. Yeah, we'll, we'll bring forward the findings of the, the compliance review to you.
Oh, so it's happening now? Compliance review's happening now?
It's currently happening right now, yes.
Okay, thank you. I think that's it for questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. On behalf of the Police Department, Pedro Espinoza, Chief of Police. The following slides capture a quick overview of the organization, our, our summary of our budget and proposals, some operational highlights, and how our proposals align with current council priorities. We are an organization of approximately 108 full-time employees, which includes 69 sworn police officers and staff assigned to the South County Youth Task Force. We're divided into three divisions, the Field Operations Division, Special Operations, and Administration. Field Operations is what you typically see out in the street, your patrol officers. Also, we have K-9 assigned to Field Operations, our Community Engagement Team comprised of our School Resource Officers and our Quality of Life Officers, Community Service Officers that focus on graffiti abatement and animal control, and some of them take cold police reports with no suspects. Also, we do have ancillary duties that some of these patrol officers currently hold, and that is a Regional Tactical and Crisis Intervention Team, Mounted Enforcement Unit, Off-Road Motorcycle Patrol, and Bike Patrol. Special Operations is our specialized units, that's Investigations, Traffic, the Anti-Crime Team, and our Regional Task Forces. Administrative Division is our records, our property and evidence, Communications, our budget, and our South County Youth Task Force. This is a summary of our budget. It's broken into Administration, Communications, Investigation, Patrol Records, and Special Revenue. For fiscal year '26, it's 33.6, and for fiscal year '27, 34.5. The increase will be to Operations, and that captures the fiscal invest, I'm sorry, the capital investment programs that we're proposing, along with some increases to workers' comp, and our contractual services are factored in at 3% CPI. And so that, that explains the difference where to the Operations number. Some of our highlights, operational highlights that we want to share with you for this last budget cycle is with your approval, we were able to implement the full-time Quality of Life program that initially started as a pilot program, and that is currently being developed. And so we were able to add a supervisor and from what we gather so far, and which we presented to, to council a couple of months ago, we've had a few success stories. The Axon Body Warning Camera System, and we were the last in the county to transition to this system, which utilizes cloud-based storage and facilitates the prosecution of our, of our crimes that we sent to the District Attorney's Office. It also increases our, our ability to be transparent with the community, as most of these interactions are captured on video. And conversely, we refute complaints, some, some that we've received that in reality did not happen. And we reviewed the video and able to refute them. Our Community Engagement Coordinator, we were able to, with your approval, bring a full-time person on that really has been the voice of the organization, manage our digital media platforms, and also serves as a public information officer and has been the voice of the organization. That person is responsible for scheduling all our community engagement efforts, to include National Night Out, Coffee with the Cop, Ice Cream with the Cop, our, our Weekend Cafecitos that we work with South County Youth Task Force. And so there's many more that they are responsible as well, including the community academies. And for the first time, our Community Engagement Coordinator put together an annual report, which we started for calendar year 2023, which gives the community an insight of what we achieved for the prior year. And this last quarter, we released it for the second time. Our recommended budget supports our improvement to our service delivery and a demand that's currently from the community, maximizes officer productivity, particularly with the Axon Draft One software, which complements our current Axon suite. And Axon has been an industry leader for the past 25 years. Initially, it started out as taser, and so they got into the body-worn camera, and now they're into drones and eventually Real-Time Information Centers. So they're a reputable company. And what this system does is uses artificial intelligence that is a closed source with a large, a large language mode and assists the officer on preparing their reports. So by the time they get back to the station, the report's written and affords them the opportunity to be out in the field just a little bit more. The interview room upgrade, the current platform that we have is no longer supported. The actual company that we contract with is out of business. And so this is a critical piece of equipment that we need in order to, to maintain the chain of custody with our evidence, evidence that captures all the digital interviews. And so this is critical. And, and it's cloud-based storage, and so it will be able to send those videos to the District Attorney as well. The enhancement will maintain the integrity of the investigations and legal compliance, supports department commitment to be transparent, and trust, and streamlines our evidence collection management, improves operational efficiency, and increases officer presence in the community, again, with the Draft One software. We also have another key piece of, of infrastructure that needs to be replaced, and that is the classroom at the, our current shooting range and training facility that unfortunately had a huge problem of black mold and was, was in essence destroyed and demolished. And we had to currently lease on a 24-month program what we currently have. So the goal is to, it makes a lot more financial sense for us to buy that and have it there stationary as opposed to try to pay a good amount of money. It costs about $10,000 to remove it. And so that is one of the asks that we have there. And that classroom is utilized to, every training is start off with statute update, legal update, and so safety briefings and all that is done there at the class. Also, that class is equipped with a safe area where the officers could safely clean their weapons. And also, there's some storage facilities where the range instructors and the range masters could do their thing. So that is a, for a total of 324,073 over the two fiscal years. How this aligns with council priorities, essentially for, it's essential for the delivery of state-mandated firearms and arrest and control techniques. We do arrest and control training there in that classroom. And it also allows for an enhanced officer instruction, firearm cleaning rooms, surveillance monitoring with the Draft One and Axon video system for investigations, and additional storage for the shooting range. And with that, I'll take whatever questions you may have.
Go ahead, Councilmember Bracco.
Chief, are the new cameras, are they totally implemented now and working?
For the interview room, no.
No, for the body-worn ones?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
So Chief Espinoza, we had a tax initiative on the ballot that did not pass. And can you tell me what was on the wish list if it had passed?
Well, certainly, had it passed, part of that ballot was to form that committee that would in essence determine how that money was spent. I think, and this is something that I shared with community members publicly, is that our beat system hasn't been reconfigured or visited in over 25 years. Both the northwest and southwest quadrant has grown exponentially, which are, the beats are the same. And so they're disproportionately geographically set for that beat officer. So that may have been an opportunity to revisit the beat system and determine whether or not that, that, that would be the wisest thing to do to reconfigure our deployment.
So I've done a ride-along, and that was pointed out to me, you know, bird's-eye view of what it was, and I, I agree with that. And if I'm correct, that, you know, ideal beat reconfiguration, if you will, would, would require about six officers to kind of fill that, that gap if, if we got to that ideal beat?
Well, it, it all depends. And so, one, we would have to, to look at metrics and see what is, what particular quadrant of the community is generating the most amount of, of calls for service and whether or not the deciding committee would figure or vote that, that, that would be the best deployment model. And so, and again, it's, it's, it's all with, with, with council would deem as a priority or what the community would want as far as their police officers to, or how they want the duties to be carried out.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. On the Axon?
Yes.
When you, when you invest in that, or when you purchase it, or when they're selling it, do they sell it with an idea of a percentage of productivity increase because of it?
They don't give you a percentage. They don't attach a percentage. In other words, if you deploy this, your officer is going to be unobligated approximately 24% of their workday. Keep it in mind that there's different deployment models, different schedules. And so the whole goal is to keep him out in the field and visible longer and not be tied up at the station writing reports.
Do you see it? Do you feel, do you feel?
Well, we've only, we've only piloted with a small group of officers. And that's, we still, we don't have full deployment on that. But hopefully with approval, that's something that we could deploy department-wide.
Okay. Do you have another question?
Just a follow-up. So the unobligated time, doesn't that also provide opportunity for proactive policing and initiated kind of stops and things like that?
Yes. And so, you know, there's a best practice model that says that, and again, I don't want to use police jargon, and I would invite anyone to visit the Center for Public Safety Deployment at ICMA. And, and I've read an article that kind of parallels what the International Chief of Police says, is that an officer should have 33% to 40% time, unobligated time, so they can make the community contacts, employ a community-oriented policing type of philosophy in their everyday dealings. And 33% of that time should also be used to be proactive, get familiarized themselves with the concerns in their beat, and come up with plans to address those, those, those crimes. And certainly, the other 3% is spent responding to calls and preparing reports, their administrative work attached to calls for service.
Would you be able to, I'm putting you on the spot, and if you don't know, you just don't know. I appreciate that. Do our officers now have about that 33% of unobligated time? Or are they mostly responding to calls and reactive rather than proactive and doing community policing?
We don't know that. The last time we ventured to look into that was in 2016 after we did a staffing study. And so we did an update to the staffing study in 2018. And unfortunately, you, you cannot accurately capture those numbers until you're fully staffed. And what that, what those studies are going to tell you is that certain shifts are way bu, way below that. But then again, you get into your graveyard midnight shift that is working at whenever one else is sleeping, and you have a block of time, you know, particularly from 3:00 to 5:00 in the morning, where they're going to have a little bit more than 33%.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one more, sorry.
Yes.
When I did, when I did a ride-along, so I noticed, so help me, walk me through this. So there's three colors of, as the calls come into the officer, there's three colors of importance. Is that the right word?
Priority?
Yes.
Yes.
And the lowest priority color are the ones that unfortunately become, is discretionary, the right word for officers, based on the, how many of the higher calls that they have?
Right. Well, nothing is discretionary. So there's six priorities, and you know, obviously, the color red was the first priority. And life and death, and then if you're, if actually property is getting damaged while it's being witnessed, up until a theft with no suspect information. So those are, will receive the least priority, and some of them will get referred to our online, online reporting system. And so, you know, and, and, and they have to respond if it gets dispatched. Unfortunately, there's some calls that will pen for an extended period of time because the priority ones, the in-progress stuff is going to take precedence over everything else.
Are some of the lower priority calls for service something that a community service officer takes care of at some point?
Yes. And so those, when a community service officer is working and, currently, they only work day shift, so they'll get assigned those misdemeanor crimes with no suspects, your cold reports per se.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's it. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to take a minute just to introduce myself. Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the public, some city staff, I'm Rob Fleep. I'm your new fire chief. I just want to take my second Monday here to kind of walk you through the Fire Department's budget here. So if you do have some questions, go gentle. I'll have my staff here to kind of give me a hand if need be. First, I want to just kind of go over the purpose of the Fire Department. So just beyond protecting lives, property, and the environment, the overarching theme of what we do is, is basically what I can tell you is we're here to save lives and impact the community every single day. So our theme is to invest heavily in the, our community, and so we're asking you to support our budget. So how we do our divisions, we have Administration, we have the Operations. And our Operations Division Chiefs oversee Training, the Field Operations, and our Emergency Medical Services. So we do that with 47 FTE. That 47 includes, what Mr. Forbes included was the fourth Division Chief that we're going to be asking for, and that fourth Division Chief will help us oversee the station remodels and the Santa Teresa Station. So that executive oversight is what we're going to see with that position there. So our budget summary includes that. So as you can kind of see, our majority is invested into the people, the people round out our operations. Fire administration is a little over 2.5 to 2.8 million over 2027. Fire administration is a little over $2.5 to $2.8 million over 2027, but the operations is obviously the larger portion of our budget. So when we add 42 people for our current modeling right about now, that's what you actually see, our minimum staffing of nine firefighters every day that staff three full-time stations, so that is what is servicing the community. And they're supported by the two division chiefs, myself and two civilian staff. So that rounds out the operations and the administration. So the big lift that we do has been able to do these accomplishments. So the First Due Incident Reporting that really helps provide that data. So that data is not only just that we can use and make sure our deployment models and our resources are doing the right things, but we can report back to you and see if we're meeting your priorities. The mobile data computers, those are iPads, they're very touchscreen, just kind of modern technology that we get to use. And then, in coordination with the First Due, now we get rapid information, call updating, routing, and some of the information that is basically new technology, but is very valuable to the first responders, so they can actually see the mapping, the routing, and get to the scenes a little bit quicker. The SCBA's, the stuff that we're really asking for is stuff that public safety needs, but right in our wheelhouse of the fire department. So obviously, we're very self-conscious of carcinogens and some of the other exposures the firefighters see every day. So obviously, our SCBA are extremely important. And the reason I want to highlight the new ones with the Bluetooth, that Bluetooth allows us to communicate through our existing radios in very clear and concise manner. Before, it was just very hard to hear, it could be garbled, and we can lose our transmissions. So now the firefighters are actually able to clearly communicate with the incident commander and within the other firefighters on the scenes. Just outdated SCBA compressors, we have a small footprint as a fire department, and we need a quick turnover of the firefighters from scenes. So when you have an outdated air compressor, it does take longer to fill up the bottle. So the quicker we can put more air in the bottles, we can get those air cylinders back in the trucks, get the trucks back in service, firefighters are more resilient to run more calls. And then obviously, Rescue Medic 49, the battery powered gurney is just an industry standard. We start lifting up patients, we have an increase in workers' comp, workers' comp claim is kind of what drives our budget all the time. So if we can actually have something that alleviates just lifting, and I'm going to tell you, picking up patients at all hours of the day can just put firefighters in awkward positions, so that is just a great investment. So we're able to continue to keep hiring. We don't really have an issue in the recruiting piece, the firefighter and the firefighter paramedic ranks are just very challenging, they're very competitive, and they're also just a, always hard to kind of recruit to maintain the firefighter paramedic rank. So we're able to hire the six in fiscal year '24 and six more in fiscal year '25. The two division chiefs were hired, one left, so we do have a current opening that we are advertising for, and we're going to start the process for that. If I can highlight the 11 mutual aid requests in Northern and Southern California, that is just a very important part of what we do. Firefighters need to always just kind of support each other, so whether it's going south or staying up here north or wherever we go, it's just kind of a mandate that we feel obligated to help with the mutual aid. So that is just something that we can do. Not only is it cost recovery for the backfill and the actual resources being deployed, so I also just want to make sure we reiterate, at no point is Gilroy suffering if we lose one of the OES engines, or if we send a strike team out without, with one of the type ones gone. We're always able to backfill and make sure we're maintaining adequate public safety on that end. So the additions to our budget, the two chest compression devices, this is just for the EMS component that the firefighters and the paramedics will use, and this is just to alleviate, our current model can just be the hands-on, the chest CPR compression. The machines are actually very consistent, very reliable, and just provide that absolute cardiac compression that we're looking for. If we're extended on scenes, you can be doing chest compressions for upwards of 30 minutes, and it's absolutely physically exhausting. So the chest compression devices actually will alleviate firefighters from doing chest compressions for an extended time. It also keeps firefighters and paramedics from doing those chest compressions with patient movement or in the back of moving ambulance, if you can just kind of imagine what that looks like with an ambulance driving down a road and the firefighters trying to do compressions on a patient. So that's an extremely important device. The mask fit test, we're always about trying to reduce industrial dangers to us, so every firefighter is issued an SCBA mask, and that's just the mask that puts on there so we can make sure we breathe clean air. That mask is actually fitted to an individual. So annually, we put that mask on the firefighter, now we can get a machine that actually tells us for sure that mask fits. If the mask doesn't fit, air and dangerous toxins can actually seep through, and then we're actually inhaling and ingesting some toxic air. So that is one, that's why that mask fit test is on there. Hydraulic tools, it's a very fancy name, back in the day, you might hear the brand name of Hearst, or some of the heavier tools that would be connected to a machine. That machine would be like a power unit with long cables, and it was just very labor intensive, very heavy. These hydraulic tools are lightweight, they're faster, they're made for quicker deployment. So our staffing, we call a 3-0 staffing on an engine, we can get firefighters to grab a tool, get to a scene of an MVA or a need for one of those tools, and start working, which then actually helps the patient be extricated quicker. So that is the goal of what we're trying to do, is trying to enhance patient care. So that is the hydraulic piece of that. We're going to ask for two sets, and just based on the cost, it's spread over the two years. So that is why we see one in fiscal year '26 and another one in '27. Mobile radios, public safety is extremely important, there are a lot of changes that always happen, and we're always talking about the interoperability for the two. So as technology changes, and it's not just technology, it's also the surrounding agencies, we have to be able to communicate, that is just an extremely important part of our job. We'll say we're going to replace our bunker gear. That's just kind of the nature of what happens. The firefighters are very busy, when you deploy nine firefighters out there, they're always doing something, whether it's training, it's running calls, you're wearing your gear, the gear will wear out, that's just what happens. So we actually look at the textiles and the manufacturer's recommendation, and currently, it's kind of like a 10-year mark, and that 10-year wear-life is actually decreasing. So at some point, they recommend maybe a five or six-year life for this gear, and the gear is pricey, it's very expensive. So that is why that's on there. Now, the expired, that is the 10-year window and damage, that is just part of what we do. We're crawling, we're lifting, we're training, we're dragging things, the gear is just not always going to last. So we're looking to replace, I believe, about 16 sets for at least the immediate need right now, and then we continually annually to inspect and replace the gear. The administrative division chief, for the Santa Teresa design and build, along with the remodel, that is an executive level oversight, that is a daily task. There is something from contractors, whether it's internal or external stakeholders, that is basically a seven-day person that just needs to be there to answer questions. Not only during the design and build phase, but there are a lot of things, once the station's built, it's just a continual process. So that division chief will oversee that, and there really isn't going to be any downtime, so there will be other programs that we now have, maybe didn't have the capacity for, that we can kind of offload from one of our existing division chiefs and pass on to the administrative chief. We're looking to kind of create some stability and career succession with moving two engineers to a promoted position of the fire captains, and that is to actually augment the temporary Santa Teresa Station and then move into when the Santa Teresa Station is built. So what that will actually do for us is alleviate the acting pay, you know, and have consistent oversight and leadership abilities that somebody is always the go-to officer that is in charge of those stations. So if anything ever happens, it's a dedicated person versus somebody working overtime or an acting basis. And then we'll move through, moving up firefighters to the engineer spot the following year. The infrastructure investment, the fire stations, a big thing is that they're considered medical facilities, 70%, 80% of what firefighters do is responding to emergency medical calls. So there are some very specifics, whether it's decon, whether it's just kind of some of the cleaning up after calls, cleaning your equipment, and then the other big piece is changing our dormitory and restroom privacy type things. Based on our current workforce and projected workforce, where we'd like to be, the open bays or things like that of the past are really not something that our current workforce is used to, and so there is kind of that big component to it. Where this fits into your priorities, maintain and improve the city infrastructure, so the improvements to our existing fire stations. This is a big deal, the Chestnut Station was built in 1971, life expectancies of fire stations may get to about the 50-year mark or so, so that is just kind of, we're starting to push that. About the 60-year mark, they just become super labor intensive when it comes to maintenance and some of the other issues. The Los Ananas Station, I think, was 77, so that is kind of up there on the years also. So the remodel is a high priority for us. To ensure the neighborhood equity, the incremental staffing, which is the proposal, the promotion to, for two fire captains and then the engineers.
Questions?
Questions, comments?
Go ahead, Councilmember Bracco.
On the hydraulic tools and the CPR machine, if we have three firehouses, how come we're only replacing two?
Good question. Don't have quite the answer. Right now, the, our standard practice for the hydraulic tools is to put them on the two engines that have the high likelihood of running those calls, usually along the 101 corridor, where you're going to see a lot of the, majority, the severity of the accidents. So that's where that's kind of spread out for that. The chest compression devices is just the current model, they're about on average $17,000 to $18,000 per compression. Grant money has kind of dried up a little bit, that is also one of those things that can be grant funded, whether it's through the county or other means, but right now, it's just to kind of spread out the expense, and that's just our need right now.
Councilmember Hilton?
Chief, on the, I think it's the second to last, or maybe the last slide, where you talked about the promotions, so just, I mean, I just do everybody's clear, whatever, a firefighter can promote to captain, doesn't necessarily have to be a fire engineer to fire captain, like that's, that is also a pathway. And some of the places inside the notes, inside the work plan, it mentions firefighter to fire engineer, firefighter to fire captain, but I've seen it twice now where it says the fire engineers to fire captains. So just, I mean, it's an educational thing too for us, just so we all know that you could promote as, to a captain from the firefighter rank, you don't necessarily have to go, it's not like you have to go.
Step one.
Yeah. So maybe, I don't know, maybe by June 2nd, we can clear that up, because I know it's like two different spots.
Absolutely.
The other thing that I think you could provide, a little, just a short little education on is, is how we operate, how a battalion chief operates in the city of Gilroy, and the importance to have that chief command on scene, and the way we do it, because I know you were previously a battalion chief, and you might have been in the department where you have folks that are on the line, and a battalion chief there, and then you have this sort of division where you have the administrative level division chiefs and those that mainly do a 40-hour work week. So if you could just sort of explain really quick, like how they're really doing double duty of desk work, and then at the same time expecting to be operational ready?
Absolutely. Let me reiterate the amount of work, that we have two division chiefs currently, and the third division chief spot is open, so that means it's filled by a captain overtime, or that also receives acting pay for that. So our two current division chiefs are filling program managers and an operational function. So we use the term battalion chief, and that is an operational chief that fills in for what we would call an incident commander. Anytime you have a significant event, it doesn't always have to be a fire, it could be a violent incident, of any kind, shootings, stabbings, multi-apparatus or unit response, you want somebody that's actually in charge. And I will reiterate just some of the importance, and you've heard me say a few times, when we have three people, three firefighters on an apparatus, that's an officer, an engineer, and a firefighter, you need those three to be able to work, but you also need somebody that has command oversight, that can do communications, safety, and have an overall situational awareness. That's where the battalion chief fills in, and that could be on medical calls, cardiac arrests, the car accidents, you put them on the highway, somebody needs to stand out and watch. We require our division chiefs to have radios and pagers to be able to respond to those calls, so that is an absolute need. And you're right, where I came from, as a shift commander, that was my duty. So I would fill at least 60% of a 24-hour shift, doing calls, bouncing between stations, districts, and then you also have just the people part of our job. Then you have the administrative oversight, those are full-time programs, emergency medical services, making sure you have equipment, switching out your ALS equipment, drugs, things like that, that's a full-time job, training, maintaining certifications, that's full-time oversight. So our EMS division chief has to balance out the operational component plus the EMS. We also now are asking him to do the training piece. So we're an ISO class two, so there are requirements about maintaining 224 hours of training per year. You know, there's just a lot that the chiefs have to do. So if we had somebody that was heavily focused on operations, that means they're performing safe fire ground operations, and by fire ground operations, I mean any kind of emergency incident. So yes, I do see it, it's super high on my kind of list of making sure we do safe operations, and I really require these guys to focus heavily on making sure the firefighters are able to go home every 24 hours.
Perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Hi. So let me give you one that you're going to probably go, oh my God, really? You talked about six new firefighters in '24 and then six in '25, and if I remember correctly, we have 40-something, that's also a high percentage. Can you talk about the turnover, or the reason we had to hire six in '24 and six in '25?
So, yes, there was a, there's a turnover, and most of the time, what we do is, sometimes the retirements will kind of catch you off guard, but sometimes they're predictable. So we had some individuals leave, either on their own accord or, you know, on ours, in some retirement. So once those people are separated, for either way, we try to backfill. And there are times where firefighters just choose, for whatever reason, to maybe go to another organization, whether within the state, outside the state. So that's, yes, there is that portion of the turnover, but just to actually say exactly what the number was.
Retirement, right.
Yeah.
I'm sure, okay. And then, so you talked about these promotions that can be just firefighters, but what about, I didn't see anything in terms of backfilling firefighters, if they move up the...
Good question. And I, you did not bring that up, we have three firefighters currently in the Joint Fire Academy. So as soon as they are completed with their firefighter training, they now become ours, and then we get to backfill those current spots. So once we have the three firefighters that will fill the firefighter spot, firefighters can move up to engineer, or, you know, we can kind of...
So they're already hired?
They're already hired, so we're not looking to add anybody, these are existing pipeline employees that we have.
Okay. Now, the next question is in regards to the upgrades to the existing very old fire stations. They do not include seismic retrofitting?
They do not. It's an assessment, and so that is just... They do not. It's an assessment. And so that is just where we're at right now. So I believe it's going to be a state requirement that we assess for the seismic, seismic problem. We don't have the funding available to see what they come out and tell us with right now.
Okay. So can you help me with my recall? Because we talked about giving the, we approved the architectural piece of it. Right, for the remodel. But it's not going to include, or are we going to get also like a quote on what that would cost, and then try to find money for it? How, how's that work?
What you recently approved was the design of the dormitories, the facilities themselves, but not the bones, not the foundation, not that. It's all going to be cosmetic or functional. We will have an analysis done of the stations to determine the extent of seismic retrogrades and probably a cost estimate. At that point, we will look at funding options.
Because it just seems a little bit ridiculous to invest in the beautification of it or the functionality of it, if it could all just go down?
Well, that's been the case since nineteen seventy-one and seventy-six. And as chiefly up said, we believe there'll be some state mandates making that occur. But that's the case with a lot of our buildings.
But will they be unfunded?
Of course.
State mandates, great. Okay.
Yes.
Wonderful.
The challenge is, too, I'll throw in just my little construction background, the, some of these seismic upgrades on an old building may cost more than a new building.
More cost than just tearing it down and.
That's the problem.
I get that, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Klein? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. I'll pass that on.
Okay, we're going to do our eight o'clock, ten-minute break. See you at eight twenty-five. Okay, we are going to get back at it. And next is Sharon Goy, Community Services Department, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of the community. Sharon Goy, Community Development Director. And here are some photos of our wonderful department. Our department's responsibility is to facilitate development activities through entitlement, permitting processes, and inspections. We do that because we want to protect and enhance the community's safety, welfare, quality of life, and economic opportunities. We also implement a variety of programs to address the housing needs for our diverse community. Community development is comprised of a wide variety of functions. As you see there on the screen, it ranges from planning to building, code enforcement, fire prevention, hazardous materials, wastewater, pre-treatment, and housing community services. We have twenty-seven team members. And our budget, as you see, is about seven to seven-point-two million for the next two years. And that's pretty similar to our current fiscal year projected through the end of June. And next, we're going to go over some notable accomplishments during this, you know, current two-year budget cycle. You have seen some of these before, but without, we'll take this opportunity to celebrate some of these accomplishments collectively with the council. So in twenty-twenty-three, we launched our new permit system. We called it Gilroy Online, so Go Permit System, which provides twenty-four-seven customer self-service functions. Customers can now apply for permits online, upload their plans and drawings, check the statuses, pay for permits, and request for inspections, all online through our portal. And during the current two-year fiscal, the budget cycle, current two fiscal years, we have hired and onboarded nine, new team members, also had some promotions as well. In twenty-twenty-three, we got the HCD certification for our housing element. We also been implementing some state housing laws and building laws through creating websites, forms, checklists, and incorporating all of that into our development review processes. Council actually just saw this in April, that we received this Caltrans grant and approved staff to engage with a consultant to develop a climate action plan. And we've been partnering with the High-Speed Rail Authority, MVTA, to conduct community outreach to develop a station area visioning study. We've also been collaborating with the County Office of Supportive Housing and the Housing Authority to develop affordable housing at AC and Alexander. So the first several bullet points there, these development activities represent some examples of the day-to-day operations of our department. And during this last two years, we've been seeing a very, very high level of activities. Develop, high development activities just means a lot more workload for our team members. So some of them have been working long hours to meet the development needs. We have limited resources, so therefore, you know, we're being prioritizing customers, development applications, and prioritizing economic growth. We've also integrated Solar App Plus with our online permit system, and this has created an automated permitting platform for residential solar energy systems. And council just heard about this recently, too, several months ago, that will establish this pre-review ADU plans gallery. This helps to facilitate a faster and more cost-effective permitting process for our residents. And as you're aware, we implemented the smoking prohibition ordinance and also developed and implemented sidewalk vending ordinance back in twenty-twenty-three. We have inspected and permitted over three hundred facilities under the, our hazardous materials programs. We also completed a hundred percent of all annual fire prevention inspections for two-hundred-and-eighty facilities. This includes schools, apartments, hotels, and motels. We presented, and it was adopted, the new sewer ordinance and enforcement response plan to ensure compliance, compliance with federal water quality laws. We have created a new housing community service division and created a new manager position and hired that position as well. We've been conducting monthly unhoused service provider network meetings to increase collaboration and partnership with service providers for our unhoused. We have been hosting community engagement events and workshops and housing resources. We've been averaging about twelve of those a year. And as you saw last week at the council meeting, we're hosting a whole series of events during Affordable Housing Month this month. And just in March, council approved the pilot BMR preservation program, and this will help us maintain the affordability of existing BMR units and to support homeownership opportunities for low-income residents. At the council meeting last week, you also saw our draft twenty-twenty-five to twenty-thirty CDBG consolidated plan. So for service levels and resources, in our recommended budget, we're estimating a seven percent increase in revenue this next fiscal year, another thirteen percent increase in the following year over the current year's projected actuals. So revenue increase represents development activity increase. So we're going to have a work plan item, department work plan item, to evaluate our resource needs, staffing needs, and the service delivery model of whether, you know, in-house versus outsourced. We've also created and restructured our code enforcement budget, budget planning and monitoring, because currently, code enforcement is allocated fifty percent in planning and fifty percent in building. So by creating this new budget for code enforcement, it will help us streamline and make it more efficient to plan and monitor the budget. We've looked at position allocations and updated that to reflect the work related to the wastewater pre-treatment program, fire prevention program, and hazardous materials programs. And for enhancement, Santa Fe County Planning Collaborative, they provide technical assistance to all sixteen jurisdictions in Santa Fe County. They facilitate cross-jurisdictional learning, collaboration, and resource sharing. And participating in this collaborative really helps provide financial efficiency. So we have adjusted our budget to continue to participate in this collaborative. This next two years, we'll be encountering a new budget cycle, I mean, a new co-cycle. So we'll be enhancing our training and professional support budgets for building and fire prevention teams to help with training needs and also a lot of different reference materials because of the new co-cycle and other mandated trainings by the state. And we talked about the pilot BMR preservation program, so we'll continue to do that in the next two-year budget cycle. And council just saw this last week, too, that there will be CDBG funding allocated for sidewalk and curb ramp improvements to meet accessibility requirements and create safe pedestrian pathways. And for council priorities, under developing a financially resilient organization that relies on local revenues and resources, we initiated community development-focused fee study. So we're looking to complete this, this fee study in this next budget cycle to help enhance cost recovery, achieve financial sustainability, and grow our capacity to meet the increasing service demands. And to maintain and improve city infrastructure and incorporate green energy practices, we'll be working on developing a climate action plan. This council just approved the consultant engagement back in April. And as I mentioned, we'll have a new co-cycle. So this new cycle will be including the new California Energy Code, New California Green Building Standards Code, and there will be new, you know, green building practices and energy efficiency improvements as part of that. In the CDBG sidewalk curb ramp program, we just talked about that. And to promote availability of safe, affordable housing, we talked about the BMR pilot BMR preservation program. And earlier this year, we also gave council an update on the affordable housing framework. So once that's completed, the affordable housing study, once that's completed, we'll be able to bring the framework over to you to help increase affordable housing production in Gilroy. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Questions? Go ahead.
More of a comment. I just want to say thank you for being adaptive with the, the solar app, because that was something that was really easy for you all to do, to cut down, you know, your, the, the solar app would only take a, a current residential rate, I think it was like ten, like ten kilowatt system. But with the load that a lot of, you know, bigger homes and other homes need now, you all were able to look at that and say, you know what, it's okay, like, let's, let's up the threshold to make it more ministerial, more streamlined, faster. So now, you know, regular residentials can actually get their, their building permit within a couple of days, as opposed to like months long. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Thank you, Sharon. So when we talked about, in our strategic plan, we talked about looking at bringing some of the things that we contract out in-house. Is that the, when you talked about a work plan, is that what you're referencing there?
Yes.
And then you also talked about a fee study. When will we see, like, the results of those reviews and studies and things like that? So, I mean, I think it was kind of our hope to bring that in-house. And so like, how long before we can possibly move in that direction?
Yeah, we estimate completing that fee study this fall. So I think, you know, by the end of this calendar year, we'll be able to bring the fee study to you and the evaluation of the service delivery model and the resource needs.
And then the other question I have is, when I'm looking at the increase in staff, you know, I came to a, a city council meeting when I was, you know, coming, I came for like, a year as I was running. And one of the work plan updates, you were making reference to a whole list of priorities, and that the state mandates were keeping you just kind of on the top few and not getting down to the lower ones. And I kept hearing you say in a number of different ways and a number of different times, that you are lacking the adequate number of staff and that your staff is working all these long hours. Is that still the case? You know, I'm just looking at, at all of the additional state mandates, all the additional, you know, you've had in, in excess in permits and, and all of these different things. Are you, I don't see the reflection in the resources in the budget that reflects that. Am I missing something?
I think that's that work plan item where, because we are seeing the increase, and we are projecting even more revenue as a result of, you know, more development activities. And that's why we have a development, a work plan item to look at those development needs to evaluate.
Including additional staff and resources.
Correct, and the service delivery model.
Okay. And that'll all come back at the end of the year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. One of the things, when we talked about our strategic plan, we talked about economic development a lot. And a lot of what we recognize as economic development is related to community development. And one of the items within community development is code enforcement. And I'm wondering if, at this point, do you have any anticipation for additional code enforcement, not just replacing what, I believe you're looking to hire somebody now? Part of your plan at this point does not include additional code enforcement, does it?
Yeah.
I can, I can answer that. Mr. Mayor, as part of the allocation of staffing, we did not add any positions funded by the general fund outside of the economic development director. If the council would wish for us to do additional code enforcement, of course, we would need more code enforcement officers. And that is something that, if it's the will of the council, we could certainly have that discussion. The service level that you're being provided in this budget is pretty much what we've been providing. And so any, you know, amendment or change to that would require a shifting or identification of some resources.
I definitely would be interested in options and additional code enforcement officers, if, if we can get that as part of this, this budget cycle. I know that means sooner rather than later, but if that's possible. And if not, then sometime soon thereafter.
Well, I, I would ask if there's a consensus of the council to do that. And if there is, we could return during the adopted budget with a, a plan on how to do that. But I, would help me now, knowing if there's a consensus.
Councilmember Rocco, you interested in additional, the conversation at least for additional code enforcement officers? No?
I'm into the conversation, but with the same thing like you just said, with those options where you can look at it, like, okay, where are we going to pull from to get this? If only that's like clear and we can all deliberate, I'm, I'm fine for, for looking at that.
I, I'm good with that as well. But I didn't realize this was the time for it, because I would like to see more police officers included in that.
Okay. So I think we have a consensus on code enforcement. And you guys just heard Councilmember, Member Ramirez asking about, can we have a conversation about additional police officers? Okay. Well, but, but that's just like.
It's, it's an allocation of resources. And so if you want additional officers and you want additional code enforcement officers, you have to look at where that money comes from. We, we can use more employees in every department, including my own. So that is just something that we have not identified how to fund. We have a balanced budget, and we have no wiggle room in the out years. So we can certainly look at anything you would like. But to be able to come up with a financing plan, you know, in the next few weeks for significant additions, you know, certain dollar amounts are more manageable to find within a seventy-five million dollar budget and others are not. So that would be something we'd need to hear from the council about where we spend our time in the next few weeks, or we put it on a work plan to study during the, the year.
Councilmember Ramirez, I mean, I think what I'm hearing is that additional police officers would be a significant cost increase. So is that, is that something, I mean, if you want, do we want, do we want to ask each other right now if?
I, I just think that I would like us to, to move towards a better model of, what's the word? Not districting, but beats.
Beats.
I think it's, benefits the community and it protects our officers.
So I have, I have a, I have a path forward that I just want to throw out there to you, because the fire service is the same, not to take away from the police, but, you know, it's called like a, like a needs assessment, right? And Chief had talked about that. It's been a while since we looked at that. I would say that, you know, maybe we might not, not have a lot of wiggle room for adding more police officers. But at the same time, this is something that we can put on our legislative work plan. So that way, that way, it's a placeholder for us to be able to come back and start talking about it. Because I think before, at least for me, to get me there, before we even add more, any public safety, fire or police, I'd want to know a needs assessment. I want to know, like, well, why do we need it? Like, are we trying to look at response times? Like, what are the metrics? And I think it's very clear, the metrics for code enforcement right now. I think it's very clear, the benefit that you can get from that one code enforcement. But I think that would provide you a path forward and a placeholder for us to start talking about it. But I think one of those, no, I know, but, yeah, I, I get it. But I mean, it also, too, not to go on too long, if you wanted to. wanted to allocate, get more people on the beat, I mean, you could, there's four officers that are in those specialized positions, right? Quality of life, school resource officers that could be pulled right back into the beat, which they do in the summertime anyways, right? So if you wanted more to do the beat, there's that other way too.
And just, if I'm clear, just because you're asking for a needs assessment, doesn't mean you think there's not a need.
Yeah.
Right? You just want to have a more formal needs assessment so we can really understand it.
Well, I think we need to listen to the chiefs also because they know their departments. And I would want to hear how they felt about it and why they felt they needed more and where they're needed. So.
Well, I'm going to go back to the fact that the previous council allocated funds to get a tax on the ballot. My guess is if they allocated those funds, it was because there was a need for both police and fire. Now, I don't know, I would assume that some type of a needs assessment was done. You know, I don't think they just came up with, wow, why don't we just put something on?
There was nothing specific given to us.
I think the second thing you said was the right thing.
Yeah, yeah, there was nothing specific.
It was almost a test.
So.
So part of a needs assessment would be going back and hearing from the chiefs.
Exactly. Details.
Okay. Then let's, we can get that on the work plan? Do I need to take a consensus on that?
Why don't we do that on, why don't we do that on May 19th? Why don't we, why don't we figure out a way in the next week or so to formalize that a little better and put that on our, yeah, our work plan, council work plan?
I do think that's a good idea because it is a legislative item. You, as policymakers, you're going to give us a policy about what standard of service you want. You could always have more officers, you can have more firefighters, you can have more medics, but really the metrics are telling you the standard of service and that becomes the need. So the need is a very broad, general description about what you want to achieve, but the needs assessment will show you the standards you're looking to achieve. So you get that combination of analytics and service level. And I think that's the process of the legislative agenda could be used to allocate resources and time to do those studies. We have done studies in the past, many of them are outdated, but nobody argues that we don't need more people. We need them everywhere. Just how do you, how do you do it? And what do you expect to achieve by that?
Okay, so May 19th to be, that conversation to be continued. Is that what I'm hearing? Everybody's okay with that? Okay. Okay, any other questions for Sharon? Thank you, Sharon.
All right. Good evening.
Hi.
City council members, we're the Public, Heath McMahon, Utilities Director. I'll jump into the Utilities Department. So Utilities Department, high level, what we, what we do is what you probably, probably know already, but we ensure the city has a safe, reliable water supply. And then once, once the residents and the businesses get that and the wastewater comes from those same locations, we ensure that wastewater flows underground through the collection systems all the way down south to the treatment plant. And then it's safely treated down at the treatment plant. So high level, really the foundation for any, any successful prosperous city, you got to have a good water supply and you know, how do you handle your waste? And you handle it in such a manner that, you know, not spreading disease, not recontaminating your water supply and those things. So really high level, that's what we do. So I'll jump into these a bit. So our, our water group, they work on the supply and distribution of drinking water. We'll get into that a little more detail here in just a little bit. So that water section is that. Our wastewater collections group, they're maintaining the sewer system out in the streets through the public right of ways, the pipeline. And then I've done at SCRAW, the South County Regional Wastewater Authority is our wastewater treatment plant. And we do actually manufacture the recycled water for a portion of that too, put that back in the system. And then our engineering administration group, they, they support the whole, the whole gamut of things. So we have 31 FTEs and this Utilities Department proposed for this year. There's our budget summary, almost $44 million for fiscal year '26 and a little over $47 million in 2027 for both sewer and water. So Water Division accomplishments, we upgraded our water meters to Advanced Medium and Infrastructure, AMI. So back in the old days, you may remember people going actually meter to meter and actually taking the read. Most of our meters now, we have a little over 15,700 meters. And I think all but about 1,000 of them are AMI now. So they're automatically sending reads back via radio. And so we're saving a lot of effort and time on that. And we have about 1,000 that are left that are drive-by. So they have to drive by the area and close enough to the, to the meter to grab and collect those and then send them back. And so within the next two years, that's in the work plan too, to finish off the rest of them and then have everything be AMI. And then the full scale implementation, supervisory control and data acquisition. So that's, so they can control the system remotely, turn pump stations on and off, check reservoir levels at the, at the reservoir like you see there, as well as when you're coming up to the site, upgrading the screens and everything so that those, those HMI's, human machine interfaces there are displaying what they need to show and they can, so rather than just going out there and flipping switches, they're able to do pretty much almost everything remote between the pump stations, the well sites and the, and the reservoirs. A big part of what they do is that line three, that performed a weekly microbial and chemical water testing. And we'll talk about that a little bit more coming up too. But as the regulatory is getting more and more at the state level and the federal level, the, just the level at which the number, the quantity of testing and then also the technological advancement of the equipment, they're able to do smaller and smaller quantities of contaminants. So that next item, talking about PFOS, if you've looked around at Water Much, I'm sure you're hearing about that. Pern polyfluorocal alcohols, PFOS substances, effectively, they don't break down like normal substances. They, their half-life is very long. They last hundreds of years and they're not breaking down. So as it's collecting more and more in the environment, they're, and we're getting better and better at being able to analyze things, they're now able to look and find a drop of water per trillion. So parts per trillion is equivalent, they say, to approximately like one drop of water in 20 Olympic-sized pools. I mean, they can find extreme, extreme minimum percentages. And because of that, then they're also looking at things and some say they're overreacting, some are saying they're underreacting. But overall, what it's doing is requiring us to do a lot more testing and it's going to be turning into most likely more treatment at different sites and those things. But we're given time. We've got a three-year timeframe for some things, a five-year for others. But nevertheless, the testing is getting more and more, more and more stringent. And then we also completed our first lead service line inventory for, throughout the city this year. So those are some of the things they did in Water this year. On the wastewater division, a big part, you've probably seen those vector trucks rolling around. And if they did not clean, make sure they're continually on a regular routine basis cleaning out the sewer lines, it wouldn't make it down to the treatment plant. So to get that slow buildup, the lines are flat and they have to be, they use those vectors to flush out, water jet through there and then collect it back on the other side. And so they have a system where they go around throughout the city. And so we cleaned over 1.7 million linear foot of sewer line last year. And so they do that systematically and they're doing a big job, a very important job. If they didn't, the lines would start getting backed up, start coming out the manholes and we'd have certification problems and very unsanitary, you know, lots of problems. So, so they cleaned, did a great job cleaning a lot of line this last year. And they also trained staff on some of the closed circuit television. So after they're cleaning that, and then they're looking both at their cleaning effectiveness, but then also on the condition of the pipeline when they're in, that it looks like, how much, how much deterioration the pipeline, what condition the pipeline looks at. We also installed three smart covers. We're looking to install three more this next time. And those have sensors on them in the manholes so that we can, so they can, they can look at some, it's kind of like a trial at some of our certain areas we put them in. And they'll actually monitor so that if we start to see a backup in the system and it starts coming, you know, up the manhole, most of the time they're pretty deep 12 feet. But if we start to see, start to collect and start come up, then they can monitor those and actually send alarms back out to staff so they can start to see that that's, that's occurring. And then over at the South County Regional Wastewater Authority, we're getting, coming up to tail end, we're about 95% complete on that, on the expansion, expanding the total project, almost $82 million. Quite a, quite a good sized project. Just as a reminder, we share that with Morgan Hill, the operation of that facility. We operate it, but the costs are shared with Morgan Hill, about 58 to 42 right now. And then we're, once it's done, we still need to go through the onboarding and the kickoff and startup and the commissioning, all that needs to still happen, expected to happen late, late this year. But we'll be upgrading capacity there from about eight and a half million gallons a day capacity to about 11 million gallons a day. So service levels and resources. So we, the city keeps growing, as we know, we're over 60,000 residents now. And so as that's growing and also the regulatory is getting more and more, the reporting's amping up, we're, we have two additional positions in the budget. One is primarily is the water quality specialist. And so even, even with our current systems, there, how the city looks at, how the state looks at the cities, how complex is your system? How many residents do you have? How many pump stations you have? The size of the motors for the wells and the pump stations? What kind of treatment you have? How many customers you have? So it looks at all these things. And so we're, as we're growing and becoming more sophisticated, they're also saying our requirements are becoming higher and higher. And so one of the things that we, we need is this water quality specialist position. They will, they will kind of take over and be the prime person that will be responsible for collecting. As you're seeing here, they're collecting that, that sample, water quality sample throughout the, throughout the district, throughout the city. We have different, different locations to, that's representative, approved locations by the state saying, yeah, this is a representative of the water you're supplying to your customers. And so that person will become that specialist person that you're going to oversee the sampling, you're going to oversee the backflow control, you're going to see the cross connection program, and you're also going to be the main person that's coordinating with the state to make sure we're staying compliant on all those things. And then the water operator will, will have some similarities. It will have a higher level certification because when our prime person responsible for the whole system is out, there, the system, when that person, when that person is out, the next person up needs to have a minimum amount of certifications also to be able to run the system for backup and even for on-call and all those kinds of things. So this water operator position will help us both bring up the technical ability of the staff, but also will help us to get back on track with our valve exercising program when we start that regular routine maintenance throughout the district and exercising those. And what that helps to do for us is not only understand the status of that for emergencies, but also for, it'll turn into capital program too. If we say, hey, these valves are stuck, there's no way we can get them loose, we need to put them on the capital program to, for replacement. And so it'll feed into other, other informational items to help us too with the, with the CIP and whatnot. For the CIP upcoming up, we have between sewer and water, we have 10 projects over the next two years in sewer, 20 in water, averaging about, about $15 million a year for combined. And under priorities, a main thing we're doing, maintaining and improving city infrastructure. So various, there's some more detail on when the CIP comes in the end after John goes through Public Works. But, but essentially, most of the projects we do in sewer and water are pipeline related, replacing or upsizing what we have. And then the other one is finishing up the SCRAW wastewater treatment plant expansion, as we mentioned earlier. So with that, happy to take any questions you may have.
Go ahead.
You were saying that Gilroy is what, 58.1% and Morgan Hill's 41.9% with all the building Morgan Hill is doing. Have those numbers been reassessed to see if Morgan Hill has, you know, it has increased their percent and Gilroy has lessened it?
So there's two different, and Jimmy described, he can correct me if I'm wrong, I'll tell you my understanding. So there's two different numbers. There's, the numbers we pay for overall capacity. So the overall capacity was agreed to quite some time ago, looking at ultimate build-out. So those are like physical improvements at the plant. So we maintain that certain capacity, assuming Gilroy's fully built out and then Morgan Hill's fully built out. So that's for the construction aspect. The other aspect is that does fluctuate, kind of as you're saying, if Morgan Hill goes faster and they build faster and their flow is higher, the operational costs, we pay, we have meters and so, and we track. Right now, okay, Morgan Hill's, say they're going faster than us. And so the yearly operational costs that we pay for staffing there at the plant, for chemicals, for everything it takes to run it, is by actual flow. So whatever the flow percentage is from Gilroy, they pay the actual number.
So it's reassessed every year then?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
No further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Last.
The best for last.
I spent 30 years being last, I think, on the agenda. So thank you for, for continuing my, my place as the anchor leg. Cause I was in, I was in track and field at one time. Hard to believe at this point, but thank you. John Dowdy, Public Works Director, and representing tonight the fine 33 individuals who call Public Works their home as well as me. And we thank them for that and every day going out, many of them out in the field and protecting our assets, infrastructure and public safety. Sorry, still haven't grasped this setup here. I think you each understand what we do at Public Works and I'm not going to belabor the point too much. We do many things. And I think we try to do them as well as we possibly can. And we're trying to do it better and better as we get along. Part of this, again, is we have field operations, we're dealing with parks, we're dealing with streets, maintenance, repairs and ongoing work there, design work, public safety, streets, designs and traffic controls and traffic issues, street lights, signals, all the things that you might imagine within the department as well as just capital infrastructure development. Our budget is roughly going to be, proposed to be about the same for the next two years at around $10 million. Our administrative accomplishments, and I'll just focus on really a theme which is in part seeking grant funding. Obviously, this is a tough budget. We anticipate it to be continuing over the next two years. And so we will, along with, I know other departments, continue to seek ways to supplement general funds and restricted funds and all other funds through grants. Happy to, to announce, you know, with this, that what we were able to get is about almost $1 million in two highway safety improvement program grants. One of those will help the Lions Creek Trail Safety Improvement there and the crossing and at Santa Teresa. Engineering wise, again, last week you filed, allowed us to file the notice of completion for Gourmet Alley. We'll take one more run at Gourmet Alley. We've seen this picture a few times, so, but that's the last time today. And we completed the citywide pavement rehabilitation project, started the Civic Center Master Plan. And we are in the process of getting ready to solicit for an approximate $7 million citywide pavement rehabilitation project. And I think, I hope you received the striping plans for that today in your email. If you didn't, let me know. We have fully implemented with the addition of Mark, who's in the back, our environmental programs manager. So that was a changeover from the Morgan Hill contract model. And one of the things, again, keeping to a theme that Mark was successful in was getting a $527,000 grant from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission for EV chargers and also able to leverage that with Silicon Valley Clean Energy to pay for our share, required local share. So that was a great thing. Parks and landscape, I'll call it just restrooms, restrooms, restrooms. And we're going to continue with that theme coming up in one of the upcoming meetings in June for the Los Animas Park replacement of the, I believe it's called the, the most westerly restroom there. And several other things going with restrooms, including updating and working on Los Animas and also the other restrooms at Los Animas and working on San Ysidro as well. Litter cleanup, we've heard code enforcement, we've heard a lot of concerns and issues about economic development and how people perceive things. And obviously from street maintenance, we're focused a lot on gateways and approaches to the community, things that people see, whether they're driving through a first time and only time, or whether they're seeing it every, every day. So that's something we're working on and continue to pursue. And at this point, we are basically seeing no additions of regular staffing. This budget does include two additional part-time staffers. With emphasis on that will be Gourmet Alley and General Litter Assistance Cleanup. Par, with an emphasis on that will be Gourmet Alley and general litter assistance cleanup around the city. So that's something where we think the community and the council has been push, pushing forward. From an infrastructure investments, we're really, I think the theme tonight also is around budgets and challenges, which is continuing to extend the useful life of our infrastructure wherever possible. An extension and doing capital repair is far more cost-effective at some, to, to a point than actually building new. But sometimes building new is a necessity and that's also something that we'll talk about in the capital improvement program as well. I'm not going to belabor a lot of this is issues here. We've been talking about all night in different ways, but Public Works helps contribute to the community in terms of safe, clean, neat parks, parkways, safe access to neighborhoods and also getting appropriate infrastructure for development projects. Again, back to economic, we support CDD, Community Development and their efforts and to keep the community vibrant, to encourage new jobs and new opportunities for the community and for this, uh, play, this, I'm sorry, this community. So I'll stop there and then I'll go to CIP. So are we can, if you want, I could just roll the CIP and then we can do all questions at one time. So in June of 2023, you approved the fiscal year 2428 Capital Improvement Program. So we are working in fiscal year 2627 of that Capital Improvement Program. We have added a few projects and I know we'll talk about those, including the pickleball courts as we move along. We did go to the Planning Commission. So on May 1, the Planning Commission did find that the, the additional projects in the Capital Improvement Program recommended were consistent with the general plan. So that's a statutory requirement, so just to be clear. Again, this includes utilities as well as other projects, including ICE, Gilroy Ice Center and other projects, Santa Teresa Fire. So it's a significant amount of money for your two-year total for capital improvements. And I would say it is robust and, and challenging for delivery. But we're up to the task. And I don't belabor this, this is in your packet tonight, but it is certainly allocated among various funding sources. And again, general fund and the theme for the night, general fund is a small portion of this million dollars, which is set aside at 500 each year for sort of general parks improvement projects, small projects like some of the restroom cleanups and things of that nature. And I certainly don't want to go through in, in detail to this point, but you're looking at in the streets program, you've, as a council, committed to significant investment in your local streets. This capital improvement program continues that. Again, we're looking at about a 7 million in the current fiscal year, rolling into next fiscal year, an additional four and a half each year there for the next two years. So 9 million more committed to that. We are working on several traffic signal projects, which you're familiar with, the annual sidewalk rehabilitation program. So there's a lot going on in this arena. The utilities, you just heard about that. I won't even spend any time on that. You can bring Heath up to talk to him if you have any more questions about that. But just to say, we're certainly working on implementing the infrastructure master plans that have been in place for some time and needed to deal with. And these are really backbone, a lot of backbone infrastructure work that utilities will be working toward. Public facilities, I mentioned Santa Teresa, the library improvements project, which will be coming to you in the near future for design contract. And you, last week, approved the Chestnut and Los Animas Fire Station renovations. And then this large, the large project Gilroy Ice Center, significant. We are working and hopefully we're planning to go to the Parks and Rec Commission with this, with the schematic for San Ysidro Park Project, which was a grant-funded project. We're working on Lions Creek Trail, which you approved the design contract for recently. And again, this includes two new projects, which is a citywide park improvement program, that 1 million, and then pickleball courts. And we can talk about the dollar amount in a moment. But we'll talk about that right now. So, thank you. The, I, I, I'm not, I recall a number of $175,000.
No, 120,000.
125, okay. I'm not sure, I, I, probably for a backyard pickleball court, one could get there with that.
Oh, God.
We had come back, I think, from the Parks and Rec Commission at almost $500,000 is what the commission had recommended allocating for, for courts. So we just start with that point. When we were meeting with the commission, we identified some concerns with that, that frankly, that that was what we thought was a bare bones amount of money, given all of the factors that go into public bidding and existing conditions that are unknown and various other factors. I had a chance to look around a little bit. So we started with the Morgan Hill Project, which was bid in 2023. The lowest bid's about 310,000, ranged from 310 to about $450,000 in the bids for, for courts, unlighted and very basic and very little off-site infrastructure necessary to get and serve those, but very nice courts. I've looked and found a, Sonora did one court, and I know doing one court is different than doing multiple courts, at about $175,000 for that court, with it again, unlighted, all of the things with that. I also have found that Los Banos built nine courts, or we're, we're looking to build nine courts. They bid in, in 2024, I'm not sure where they are exactly in the process. And that was about $1.6 million for nine courts. So that was about $178,000, $180,000 a court. So between Sonora, between Los Banos and somewhat there, you're looking at, let's call it $150,000 to $178,000 minimum in terms of what public bidding is bringing to the mix. We're still trying to decide where these courts go. We've, um, understand the desire from the commission that they go in Los Animas Park. There's a couple of locations, one probably be easier than others if we assume lighting. The interesting part about pickleball as opposed to tennis is, is you can actually put covers over them. So that's something that I think that we should consider, given the heat and the summers and everything that occur here. Maybe not, but that's something we should, I think, consider. I think lighting is an absolute bare minimum. So there's many factors that come at this point. I had started at around 600 to 650,000 is what, you know, what I was going to recommend between design, construction. And because this was one non-general fund monies, there was a decision to cross the board to just say, let's add it in there and make sure we have enough and don't have to find the money coming from general fund or other sources to make up the differential on this. I think the important thing to remember is regardless of what the bid price comes in, you have to approve the construction contract. You will authorize that construction contract and know exactly what the cost of that project is. We're not going to design and look to build to a price point. We're going to build the most efficient, effective and least costly with meeting the requirements of the community as possible, regardless of what amount we have maybe allocated in the budget for. I hope that helps.
Well, what I would suggest is, I mean, I know you've given different cities and cities always do way, they, they spend a lot of extra money on these projects. And where I'm coming from is at 862,000, you could do a lot with that money. I mean, you could add more courts if you want, but what I would suggest is you call a contractor that builds pickleball courts and show him where you want them and get some quotes. And then if you only want to do the four pickleball courts, I mean, you might decide to do more when, when you see what, what you can get for your money. But say you did not want to, you wanted to hold to the four, then Parks and Recreation could really use the rest of that money for a lot of programs that have been lost over the years and give back to the community for our youth. You know, I just don't want to see $862,000 spent that didn't need to be spent if you can get the same quality at a way cheaper price. I want you to do your homework. I want you to look at it. I want you to ask questions. And, you know, I, I sit here and I think, okay, are they going to hire a consultant? Are they going to hire this, that? You know, it's just, go to a bona fide contractor and talk to him. And not just one, do, do.
Well, I, I, I will just, I will again, you know, say, we are subject to public bidding requirements and we don't have the advantage of, of someone's backyard pickleball court to be able to get that point.
No, 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 no. This, this company does.
But I'm, but.
Well, yeah, but they have to, they have to put a bid in, but they have to know about it. You know, you need to con.
Perhaps, perhaps I could help.
Yeah.
Perhaps I could help. We just finished building a pickleball court last year and we did it for non-pervailing wage rate and there was no ADA compliances whatsoever and there was very little lights and there was no hardscape around it. And it was in a backyard. And sorry to the owners that I'm publicly saying this, but it costs almost $70,000. So your $110,000 unfortunately is not wrong. Prevailing wage, you're going to spell, spend well over $100,000 for a pickleball court. So I'm okay with the $800,000 and if there's money left over, we'll find something to do with it, absolutely no problem, and we'll get together and find something to do with it in recreation.
Okay, sounds good.
So I think, I think we're on the right path.
Just to be clear.
Sure, but it's, it's, we can find something in recreation if we have a couple hundred grand left over. So we'll get together with extra money and get with all of us and find a way to use it.
All right.
Thank you.
I have a question. The Red Barn is, is that involved in getting it up to, you know, code, to where we can put the sprinklers in, to where we can rent it out as an event center and generate revenue?
I'm going to look to Jimmy for that one. The answer to your question is a simple no. The Red Barn was rehabilitated to be a barn and not an event center. So in the completion of that project, there was a, a discussion by those who did that project that perhaps they wanted to use it as an event center, which requires a different type of structural environment for that building and sprinklers. So we have in the work plan for the Community Development Department to do an analysis of what it would take to convert that from a barn to an event center, but I believe it's going to be quite costly. So we are quite a ways away from being able to really use that building in the way some may have imagined. Yes.
Go ahead, Councilmember Hilton.
Thank, thank you, John. And so one of the things that, as you know, you've been in government for a long time, master plans are important, right? Sometimes they make you more competitive, give you a little extra edge, which you're going after no matter what they are. So, you know, we don't, we haven't done a Parks Master Plan. 2005-ish, we were really good. We did a lot of them, pedestrian master plan, bike master plan, Parks Master Plan. So as we're talking more about parks and parks make life better, we can all agree on that. You know, I know that they didn't rise to getting funded this time around, but you know, as, as your staff is building out and your commission, you know, that, that you're helping out, you know, maybe there's grant opportunities that are out there to fund those plans. So I would just hope that you keep your ears open, I know I do, to try to find ways in. And, and I think we already are pretty competitive in, in, in all those aspects already because we have a great general plan and we have a great CIP charter, which frankly, when I was going after a couple of these to get grant funded through Zolafrin's office, I didn't even refer to the master plans. I just referred to these awesome charters, the environmental stuff that's already been cleared, and that was good enough. But as we're going through, I just want to keep that just on, on your mind, and I know that it's something that was important to the Parks and Rec Commission to get that, especially that Parks Master Plan funded.
The, the Planning Commission also raised this, raised the interest of the, in the Parks Master Plan update as well.
Further questions for John? Thank you, John.
Thanks. Thank you.
All right. I know it's been a long night. I really appreciate the great questions especially. So I'm here to kind of button up the presentation, get us through the end. Boards and commissions, as part of our budget development process, what we do is we solicit two things from our boards and commissions. One is budgetary input, their asks for what should be included into the, the budget, as well as their recommended draft work plans. So majority of those boards and commissions have provided that information to us. So we'll push that out to the council ahead of the June adoption that's scheduled. With respect to some of the items, on a high level note, what's included in the budget typically is, from a training perspective, every two years we include training for particular boards and commissions. So for the recommended 2627, we have about $24,000 for open government planning personnel commissions. That's again to allow either folks to attend specific training conferences by Cal Cities and so forth that would enhance their participation and their role as being on that board. With respect to Parks and Recreations, again, at the recommendation of the commission as well as the interest by this council, we included the pickleball courts and then Youth Commission in support of the Youth Commission's work plan. There are a few nominal cost dollar items that we are recommending to be included. So those are all delineated before you on this slide. Happy to answer any questions. Again, we'll provide a comprehensive draft work plan, their actual input letters. We'll push those out to you probably later this week and well ahead of the June 2nd adoption for your, for your review. As far as our next steps go, so a couple of things that are lined up. Tonight, we had our budget workshop with you. On Wednesday night, we will be hosting a community budget meeting and then followed by the next Monday, which will conclude your strategic planning with a discussion on specific topics and include any legislative agendas, refinement of goals and, and priorities and such. With our goal of adopting the budget on June 2nd for our next two years, that'll put us well on our way on come July 1st, beginning of the fiscal year 26. Oh, sorry. Yes, 19th. My apologies. Almost had it right. That concludes the budget workshop and my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Hilton.
She's really happy because we were watching the number count down on the bottom right the whole entire time.
Yes, yes.
We're up at 1:30. The only, the only input I want to add is for the training. Sometimes you'll get boards and commissions that onboard that are just way more engaged, like our Parks and Rec Commission right now and Arts and Culture, that, that could really use some good opportunities to go to trainings or regional trainings. So I don't really want to necessarily, I mean, it would be nice if you just said like boards and commission training and this is their pot that they can use, because I don't want to limit, you know, one of those good standing boards. Let's say the Personnel Commission, like that one year, they just didn't have any, you know, they didn't really need any training. I, I want to be able to provide that. I know the arcs, the Parks and Rec Commission has been to a couple of them, so.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's well within department hand as well as city administrator authority and we highly encourage that. And I believe aside from this, there's typically about $5,000 to $7,000 that we budget for general trainings and we can certainly tap into those budget allocations.
Thank you.
Yep.
Further questions? No further questions? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any additional public comment? Final chances?
We had one, but I think we lost them. At this point, doesn't know the speaker.
Sorry about that. Thank you very much. Okay, adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.